Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Select Board Zoom meeting tonight of Tuesday, Tuesday, December 17th. My name's Roxanne Musto. I am the Vice Chair of the Select Board, and I'm filling in for Chair Richard Wells, who will be joining us later in the meeting. I'd like to first call the meeting to order and take the opportunity to introduce everybody who's on the screen. So if my fellow Select Board members can introduce themselves and our staff, that would be great. Thank you. John?
I'm John Cohen, Select Board member.
Ben. Old Select Board member.
Erin.
Erin Bradley, Select Board member.
Okay, and Nick, we have two Nicks here, so.
Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator.
Nick Connors, Assistant Town Administrator.
And Lynn?
Lynn Denapley, Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
Okay, thank you. So number two will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands, one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, number three is public comment. We allow 21 minutes, three minutes per person. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Please raise your hand in the Zoom, and I'll ask Mr. Milano if he could take a look and see if there's anybody who would like to speak. I don't see anybody right now, but is there anybody that you see?
Uh, no, not at the time.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll go on to number four. If we could have Chief Madden, and I see that he is in the attendees, if we could promote him, he's going to speak about the Blue Hills brush fires. Number four on the agenda. Welcome to Madden.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all the support that you have given us over the last month. The last month was extremely busy. The last couple of months have been extremely busy. Looking through the numbers, you know, the brush fire is extremely dry out. I think we had eight brush fires in September. We had 11 in October, and then we had three in November. And those three in November, one of them was, well, two of them were extremely memorable. I'm sure you've seen the news, and I appreciate everything that everyone has reached out. So I will just say, on the, the, the end of October, we had the fire up on Walcott Hill. It was about two, three acres. We extinguished that in about two days. And then it stayed dormant for a few days, and then about two weeks later, it came back alive and spread to another two acres. That fire at the top of the hill was very difficult for access. That was the one that we actually had the Air National Guard helicopter doing the water drops out of Houghton's Pond. So that was a unique experience to, to work on that fire. Something that you'd never think you'd see in the town of Milton is water drops. So after that, that was put out, and it was pretty quiet for a little while, just small fires, the dry areas. You know, one of the things that we had was, was we had a couple lawn mower fires where people like picking up their leaves, mowing the lawn, and the lawn mower was caught on fire from the, from the dry vegetation. So we had a few of those. And then the weekend of November 8th until the 20th, we got extremely busy. Braintree had probably a four alarm brush fire with multiple houses that were in danger. And Milton, we sent an engine or a brush truck over there, and I can honestly tell you that the first time in my life I've seen California-like conditions in this area where winds were blowing 30 miles an hour and fire was blowing over houses, and Braintree did an unbelievable job. And our engine one brought a brush truck over, and the amount of work that they did from about seven o'clock at night to about 3:30 in the morning was exceptional. Once that fire was knocked down, we came home, got everything back together again, and then we were called in the morning for the reignition. We were over there for a few hours on November 9th. And that weekend, that was when we had the second alarm fire on the 10th on Lincoln Street. And then that was followed up on Veterans' Day, where we were part of a task force that, from Norfolk County, and we went up to North Andover and fought a 200-acre fire. That was an extremely busy weekend for the department. The men and women did an exceptional job. It's just, you know, watching them do the work and everything else was impressive. Then that followed up on the 18th was the one that we all know about is the Houghton Hill Fire on the 8th, you know, and I sent that long email, and I appreciate you guys reading it and everybody commenting on it. There was a lot that went into that. That fire started off with about a two to three acre fire. It was spotted by the Sharon Fire Tower, called it in, and within about two hours, it exploded to over 30 acres up the hill with wind-driven fire. We had, you know, some of the exposures that we were trying to protect was the, the stables and the state police barracks. So, and then obviously, if you look at the other side of that, that area was, was Blue Hill River Road, Eileen and Adrian Silverbrook, those streets up in there. So, you know, with a fire, fast-moving fire, it was one of those things where we were just trying to contain the fire, and we weren't trying to put it out at all. And by about nine or 10 o'clock at night, we, we, we had it contained, and we were pretty good with it. And we were able to clear the companies. I think we had 80 firefighters from across the county in the area up there fighting fires. And then the next day, I called for two forestry task forces to kind of just, just get at it and, 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 you know, put the fires out. And so that day, we had one from Plymouth County, one from Norfolk County, so that was about five or six units from each county. They came in, we had the DCR, we had the State, the Department of Fire Services, we had multiple agencies up there. I think on that day, on the 19th, we had almost 100 firefighters, 100 personnel up there with 30 agencies represented on that fire. We were able to really put a lot of work into it, and almost 90% put that fire out that, that second day. And then on the 20th, we were up there just mopping up some of the, the hotspots. And when you look at across the, the state for that region, you know, for this region, you know, a lot of these fires quickly exploded to 500, 400, 500 acres. We were able to keep it to about 50 acres on that one. So I appreciate your support, and I know you have a very, very busy meeting. I checked the agenda, and so I don't want to take up too much of your time, so.
Anybody have any comments? From the board? Mr. Zoll?
May I?
Oh, Mr. Zoll Frost, he raised his hand.
Thanks, thanks, Ms. Musto. Chief Madden, thank you so much for this, and thank you also for the timely updates that you were providing the Select Board during the fires. I'm sure that you had a lot on your hands, and so just keeping us apprised of the situation was deeply appreciated. Just a quick comment and then a quick question. You know, I fear that this is not the, an anomaly, but potentially the start of a different kind of fire season in Milton. And so I guess it's great that we've had some practice now with it, but it's unfortunately something I think we're going to have to anticipate looking at more and more in the future. What advice could you give to Milton residents? You know, there's, there's certain things that people can do. You mentioned lawnmower fires to sort of lower the risk of, of perhaps inadvertently starting a fire or making fire conditions more aggravated than they normally would be. If there's any sort of advice that you would like to put out for, for our residents in that front, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah, that's actually a great question. And, and, you know, some of the things that we look at, and, you know, in the service, I learned on being on a ship, cleanliness is next to godliness, and good housekeeping, good housekeeping, you know, keeping the excessive brush away from your house, making sure that, you know, nothing, overgrown bushes and trees stay away from your house. Disposal of, of materials, burning materials. So if you have a fireplace and you have the ashes, or if you, you know, use a wood stove, or, or you have a campfire at night, or, you know, just, just making sure that you just discard your ashes, or, you know, in a safe manner, you know, put them in a, in a, in a metal container and leave them away from any kind of structure for, for, you know, a couple of days. Make sure that they're out, wet them down. You know, careless disposal of smoking materials. That's, that's one of those ones that, you know, it happens, you know. And then, you know, for the brush fires, you know, some of the things that we see is that, you know, if you take trash in, take the trash out when you go hiking in the Blue Hills. A lot of times, we find broken bottles and, you know, working with the, the State Fire Warden, you know, he said, like, 99% of all outside fires are a man-caused, you know, the human-caused. And, and yeah, sometimes you do have the people, like the person down in Anavaro that was actually going out and lighting the fires. If, if you break a glass bottle in the woods and, you know, the sun gets it just right, and the extreme dry conditions that we had could spark a fire. You know, if somebody just driving down the road throws a cigarette out the, out the window, that could start a fire. So, you know, those are the things is just that I would suggest, you know, just making sure that, you know, keep everything away from your house, you know. If you do, if you do create any kind of ashes, make sure that they're discarded properly and away from the house. So, thank you.
Thank you again.
Did you have a question, Mr. Cohen?
I did. I, I just wanted to say, I can't, just every day, knowing that you're there and your staff is there, I am amazed on the news how many house fires there are across the area every single night. Very comforting knowing you're there. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And, you know, the, the men and women of the Milton Fire Department, they're, they're the ones that go out and do it on a day-to-day basis. I'm the lucky one that just gets to get some of the accolades, but it's really just them, you know, the people that are here day in and day out. They, they do an exceptional job. It's a, it's a tough job, but they do, they do it exceptionally well. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one other thing. I think it's already been said by both members, you know, thank you for what you all do, and thank you for the updates that you give us on all of the fires that are going on in town, because I think sometimes people don't realize how much is going on behind the scenes. And I think with these forest fires that just happened, I think a lot of people were watching everything on the, the West Coast, and were really sort of surprised how quickly things could change, you know, nearby, you know, especially the Blue Hills, for instance. And the other thing that's great is that there were other units that could be called in. I have a cousin who lives in another town, and on their Facebook for one of the fire departments, they had their brush truck, I think it was Easton or something, that came and assisted, and there were many that did. So I think that's really great that you, you know, all worked together as well across departments to help each other.
Thank you. The Fire Service does a really, really good job of mutual aid. We give out help and, you know, because we know that we're going to expect it back or ask for it back. And, and the cities and towns around us, that first night when I was, you know, in the Command Center with Deputy Sumner, the Stoughton Chief, the Knollwood Chief, the Foxborough Chief, and the Sharon Chief were all there. And, you know, I was thinking about who to call the second day for those task forces. And they, all of them just said, we'll come, we'll come. And it was good to know. It was comforting to know that they were offering their support and their time and effort. So it's good. And, you know, you know, the fact that we went to Braintree and then had the opportunity to go to North Andover for one of their brush fires is just, it's unheard of these days to, to, to go to so much mutual aid. And just like Mr. Cohen said, the, the amount of fires that are happening on a regular basis now, it's just, it's, I don't know if it's just newsworthy, or it's just happening a lot. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, number six. We have discussion update. The Massachusetts School Building Authority application stats.
Ms. Musto, do we want to defer that until Mr. Wells can join?
Um, that's fine. Whatever you would want to do, Nick. Mr. Milano?
I think in talking to, maybe he said to just progress through the agenda, and he'll jump on as soon as he can. So, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just, Mr. Milano, I was wondering if we could do that, and then maybe what we could do is we could jump ahead to some of these pretty straightforward liquor licenses. Those are, those are very straightforward. So maybe we could, in, you know, in the articles, we could get to it afterwards, if there's a thought process on that. It looks like Ms. Bradley has a question.
Yeah, I just, I want to echo what Mr. Zoll just said. I find it interesting that we're about to talk about a major piece that has been under discussion without the Chair of the Board here. So I, Ms. Musto, agree with you that we should skip ahead possibly and do the liquor licenses and some other routine stuff before we start talking about, you know, the great news that happened that many don't know about, that our Chair isn't here for. Do we have any idea what time the Chair will be here?
Mr. Milano?
I think he was hoping for by 7:30, you should be able to join us. So, no issue with, from here in terms of what order to think.
So why don't we jump ahead then, if that is the consensus of the board? We can jump ahead a little bit. So we'll skip over a few items, and we're going to move ahead on the agenda. Why don't we, do you want to go to number, right to a number 11? We can just skip the whole section. We can always go back to that, those other questions, and we'll start with number 11, which are discussion approval 2025 liquor license renewals. Is that okay with everybody? Ms. Bradley?
Yep, that sounds great, Ms. Musto. If it's okay with you, I would like to make a motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 liquor license renewals for the following organizations. American Legion Post, number 114, Bullistin Golf Club, NPP Inc., Doing Business As Central Liquor Mart. There needs to be another comment in there. Delaney Lickers, Lickers, Inc., Doing Business As East Milton Wine and Spirits, Inc., Bin 98 LLC, Doing Business As Craft and Crew, The Fruit Center, Inc., Milton Housing Corporation, DBA Milton Fuller Village at Two Locations, 88 Wharf Hospitality LLC, Doing Business As Madre Ostra, Welsh Restaurant Management LLC, Doing Business As Abbey Park 556 Adams Street LLC, Doing Business As Navarro, Milton Opus LLC, Doing Business As Steal and Ride, Hojarn Inc., Doing Business As Mr. Chan's, B&amp;D Ichiro Inc., Doing Business As Ichiro Sushi.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Zoll seconded. Do we do roll call here, Mr. Milano? Okay, so roll call, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yep.
And myself, yes. Thank you. And we'll go on to number 12. We would like to do that one.
Ms. Musto, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 Sunday Opening Permanent Renewals. Delaney Lickers, Inc., Doing Business As East Milton Wine and Spirits, Inc., Bin 98 LLC, Doing Business As Craft and Crew, NNP, Inc. Oh, sorry, Craft and Crew, NNP, Inc., Doing Business As Central Liquor Mart, The Fruit Center, Inc.
Do I have a second?
Go ahead. John, you were on mute, but if you want to second it.
Oh, you're still on mute. I think you're still on mute, John.
There I am. There I am. I'll second.
Okay. So Mr. Cohen has seconded. Roll call, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, very good. Going on to the next one, number 13. Anybody want to make a motion?
Ms. Musto, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to approve the 2025 Entertainment License Renewals. Milton Opus LLC, Doing Business As Steal and Ride, Welsh Restaurant Management LLC, Doing Business As Abbey Park 556 Adams Street LLC, Doing Business As Navara, 88 Wharf Hospitality LLC, Doing Business As Madre Ostra, and Hojarn Inc., Doing Business As Mr. Chan's.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Cohen has seconded. Roll call, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes, and I'm getting hungry listening to all these.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, number 14.
All right.
Anybody for that one? Ms. Bradley?
Do you want to, do you want to break, Erin?
Oh, I'm not even looking at the screen. Sure, if somebody else wants to do it, that's fine.
I'll do, I'll do, discussion and approval.
Thank you.
It's just an approval.
I'm sorry?
It's just an approval.
You just, just make them.
I just read off all of the ones for discussion approval of the Common Vic License Renewals. You have to read all of those.
DBA, didn't we do this? Oh, no. B&amp;D Ichiro, Inc., DBA Ichiro Sushi?
Mr. Cohen, you have to, you have to make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion. Do we approve the following?
Yep, you approve.
Okay.
The Common Vic License Renewals.
Okay, that's the Common Vic License Renewals. B&amp;D Ichiro, Inc., DBA Ichiro Sushi, Bruegers Enterprises, Inc., DBA Bruegers Bagels, number 3801, Coffee Break Cafe, Inc., El Barrio Grill at Two Locations, Hojarn, Inc., DBA Mr. Chan's, KME Milton, DBA Steves, Milton LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, Milton Housing Corp., DBA Fuller Village at Two Locations, Milton's Opus LLC, DBA Steal and Ride, Newcom Farms, Peel Holdings LLC, DBA Peel Pizza Company, PB Milton LLC, DBA Bibles Reviving Company, Milton LLC, Starbucks Coffee, number 7565, T&amp;V Milton LLC, DBA Stella's Restaurant, 556 Adams Street LLC, DBA Navara, Welsh Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, 88 Wharf Hospitality LLC, DBA Madre Ostra.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Zoll is a second, and we'll do a roll call. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I think we could go on to number 15, which is a discussion approval of a Class II Dealer License Renewal. So somebody want to make that motion, or do you want me to make the motion?
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Class II Dealer License Renewal for 2025. RBM Motor Masters, Inc., Doing Business As Milton Auto Repair, located at 944 Canton Ave in Milton, Massachusetts.
Great. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cohen's a second. Roll call, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I think that we could go on to number 16, if everybody agrees on that one, which is a boarding committee appointment for the Shade Tree Committee.
Sure, Ms. Musto, I'd like to make a motion to change things up a little bit.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that the Select Board approve the nominee, the appointment of Fiona Jovan to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee for a term ending, but when, when will it end?
It says a one-year term.
A one-year term, so ending on June 30th, I guess, 2025.
Is that right, Mr. Milano? Yes, okay. All right, so, second, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Oh, there's a tie there. Ms. Bradley, we'll give you that one. Okay, all right, roll call. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, let's, we could probably go and do the minutes, if that's okay, approve the minutes. Were, were every, was everybody here for both sets of these minutes, or we'll have to separate?
No, I was not here for the November one.
Okay. And how about the February?
Mr. Cohen would not have been here for the February.
For the February one, right. Okay. So we would have, I think we would have a majority, the three of us, right, for each one. So we'll take them separately then. So who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, oh, sorry, Erin, you got your hand.
I just have a question. You can make a motion. I'll ask it afterwards. It's fine.
I'll, I'll make a motion then to approve the meeting minutes for February 26, 2024.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Erin had a question.
I have a question first. Sorry, somebody put my hand down. I was wondering, I didn't ever see any revisions to these two meeting minutes, which we usually, we do get, they go out and then we usually get a second one that says that there was revisions. Were these two find the way that they were the first time?
Ms. Denapley, was there any revisions?
No, no one had revisions for me.
Love it. Okay, thanks, Lynn.
Me too. Thank you.
Great job, Lynn.
Okay, so Mr. Zoll made the motion, and Ms. Bradley, did you second that then?
I did.
Okay, so we're going to go around and do a vote. Mr. Cohen?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so now we'll go on to the second set of minutes for approval, which are those from November 12th. Somebody want to make a motion for that set?
So, Ms. Musto, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Musto, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 12th, 2024.
Do I hear a second? I can second them.
You can.
Yeah, I'll second them. So I'll do the second, and we'll do a roll call. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Abstain.
Okay, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we've got through some of these things. Let me go back. Looking at the time, so it's about 7:30. Let's see if there's anything. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, we did good. Good job.
Richard will be pleased when he comes and discovers that we've knocked off half the agenda.
Yes, he will. All right, so let me just look back. So, do we want to look at, let me just see, do you want to talk about the Traffic Commission, information on that, or our, our, I mean, I don't know how you want to handle that, the rest of the board, what your thoughts are. We could start with one of those, perhaps?
I think Traffic Commission may be the, the least, well, not the least important, but the least controversial, maybe. Is that, is that a report from you, Mr. Milano, on?
Where are we with that? If you want to give us an update on that, at least. Start with that. That's number nine on the agenda.
Thank you. Yes, so there are no recommendations from the Traffic Commission at this time, so no action items from the Select Board. I can provide a brief update on each of the items listed. The Traffic Commission met on Tuesday, December 12th, I think. Is that right? Last week, the Traffic Commission met, let me start with that, to take up these three agenda items. Then, and I'll go actually in reverse order, just it's a little bit easier. So the two-hour parking request was emanated from some businesses down at the Central Ave Elliot Street area. If folks on the board might recall, but a couple of years ago, the Planning Department had done some extensive planning around parking designations in that area and through surveys of the business district to try to more clearly and easily delineate areas. So that's when some 15-minute parking spaces were implemented, the loading zone was implemented and signed better, and all the, most of the spots around Milton and Central were flipped over to one hour. Some service zone parking was designated, and some two-hour parking was designated on Elliot Street. Since then, we've had some requests from some of the businesses closer to Central and Elliot, requesting some locations for two-hour spaces for businesses that might have somebody with a here appointment that's not going to be an hour. So, you know, to support their customers, to give them some more flexibility around the time that they have to, and, you know, participate in business they're doing down there. So we're going to regroup. The Traffic Commission just agreed by consensus that we would circle back with the business owners, reach back out to everybody, get a sense of folks' feelings on that, and then take it from there. But we understand the request around, you know, some of the businesses, naturally, if you're a customer, maybe your appointment might be longer than just the hour. So, look, just revisit that and come back with some potential changes to that area.
Okay, Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Ms. Musto. So, Mr. Milano, have there been a lot of parking tickets that have been given out in this area?
Since we have a new Parking Enforcement Office. Uh, since we have a new parking enforcement office, sir, I, the, the numbers are increasing, uh, every day, so we've been, uh, enforcement's been really stepped up, so appreciate the Jerry and his efforts. Um, it's an area we, we pay close attention to, especially around the loading zone, um, so things are on the uptick, and it, the one-hour parking, it's, it's not like, um, people getting inundated, but it is, it has become noticeable to a few folks, so that's, uh, where we're trying to react.
Okay, that makes sense to me, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, oh, go ahead, Ms. Bradley?
Sorry, thanks so much, Ms. Musto. Um, Nick, I've been getting, so I know that, that we had a change in leadership, um, and now Marina will be the one in charge of the traffic commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're starting, and they meet how regularly?
It's not quite, uh, as regular as monthly, every six to eight weeks.
Oh, okay. Um, and if we get notices from residents, um, I've been getting multiple emails regarding a couple of streets in town that they would like to see a traffic study done on, or some type of remedial ideas, I would bring that to Marina, or you, or what are we doing now, what's the process?
No, the DPW commissioner by the bylaws, the chair of the traffic commission, so feel free to either reach out to her directly yourself, I'm happy to, um, solicit, facilitate if necessary, but you can reach out to Marina, have folks reach out to Marina directly, and we have a running list of, um, you know, hotspot issues that people bring to attention, so, but no, we're all ears in terms of, uh, places to focus on.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I got one more question. And Brushell Road is a historic road, right? Like, it's a stor- we can't, there's nothing we can do on that road because it's a historic landmark, or whatever, they designated it recently?
It may be a scenic road, but that you can still make changes as long as you restore, you know, the, the walls and stuff, but there are more, um, restrictions around what you can do. On those older roads, the issue is more like the right-of-way that we may or may not have, we might only have a narrow strip, uh, of right-of-way.
Okay, cool, thanks so much, Nick.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, and Nick, at the, at that traffic, uh, meeting, um, it, speaking of, um, traffic studies, it did come up about traffic studies around making the one-way, how, how did that end up, or is that going to the next meeting?
I, and speak to that now, that, that's helpful. Um, so, the next two items that the traffic commission, uh, dealt with were a request that's in your packet for a loading zone and valet parking in East Milton Square, as well as a potential conversion of Franklin Street between Adams and Bassett to a one-way. Um, and these issues are pretty much interrelated, uh, because, you know, having the additional roadway space on Franklin, if it were a one-way, opens up some additional opportunities to make some changes in the square, to hopefully, um, get some of those trucks off Adams, um, as well as locate some valet in response to requests, uh, from a business owner in the area. Um, we had, there was some feedback or concern about what the change to, um, making Franklin a one-way might mean, particularly for Church Street or other portions of Franklin. Um, so we're in the process of reviewing existing data that we have and traffic counts that we have to, to get a better, uh, grasp of what, what are we seeing on a regular basis, and what could change as a result of this conversion? And we'll report back to the traffic commission in, um, in January, and then this all is also, um, done with an eye towards the East Milton Forty-B project, which is expecting to start demo and abatement in February. Um, so folks are starting to already see some of the, um, preparations for that, um, down in the square, the commercial building is, is empty now, um, so that project, uh, just by the nature of the construction, a six-story building, will require, uh, significant increase in truck traffic. Um, and the developers had approached us, trying to think about ways to, to manage that truck traffic, uh, and their proposal is to bring the traffic in from Adams onto, uh, sorry, off the highway, off granite, onto Adams, uh, left onto Franklin, and then leave the site by way of Bassett, and then right back on granite and gone, and, and minimize any truck traffic that would go through the neighborhood. And again, having the additional roadway space on Franklin would be beneficial to their efforts, as well as ours, to try to keep that truck traffic from impacting, uh, congestion in the, in the area, and limit, um, trucks going through, uh, neighborhood streets. So it's all kind of tied together, um, and we're trying to come up with a solution that, um, you know, affects everything a little bit, to help, uh, mitigate the problems over the next couple of years. So, John, to you, to your question, Mr. Kane, um, we are evaluating the data that we have currently. Uh, we've been reaching out to our traffic engineers in terms of if we feel there's a need for additional new counts, um, or if, or if we feel the data that we have is, is reliable enough and, and good enough, and then, um, if, if any changes are implemented, um, have a, have new counts taken at a later point in time to compare and respond to, in case there, uh, issues that arise. So that's the current planning, and then we'll be regrouping with the traffic commission prior to making any recommendation back to this body, uh, in January.
Thank you. One last thing, I just, I, I know at the meeting, there were comments from the neighbors about the fact that doing this changes everything, so traffic studies done absent this are a lot less relevant, and they were talking about, you know, ongoing traffic tracking of some sort. That's how I took it, anyway, and they've said to me.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I think the point of going back to the data we have is just to understand, um, what has changed over time, and, and if anything has changed over time, and to understand, because that tells us, um, the movements that have been, are typically being made, and what the numbers are, and so that, um, helps us inform kind of what we need to study, if anything, um, ahead of regrouping with the traffic mission.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you. Nick, what was the discussions about people taking, or trucks taking a left on that, onto Franklin? Was there discussions around a light, was there discussions around blocking it off so that people don't sit and wait for the light to change in front of that, backing it up even more?
You mean, just because that, um, area is often blocked due to the congestion?
They're taking a left-hand turn onto, you know, from Adams onto Franklin, am I saying that right? Yeah, I think I am. Yeah, that's just gonna be a nightmare, like now, even now, when cars are waiting, it is what it is, fine, but you're talking about trucks, they're a lot larger than a car, and they could back them up and back up over the, the square, like, over that bridge. I'm just, I, I was wondering if anybody had conversations about that left-hand turn, and what they would do to mitigate the backup there.
I, I think, you know, part of the one-way conversations really coalesced around some of the conversations with, um, the project, because, I, again, creating that space on Franklin to facilitate those turns more easily is helpful, and then, um, I think, to, to your point about, if, um, if there's traffic backup on Adams that blocks Franklin entirely, and a truck's trying to take a left, they're gonna be sitting there for a while. Um, that's gonna be a management problem that, uh, we're gonna have to try to handle with enforcement and, and markings, um, to the best of our ability, but there isn't an intention to put any kind of light in there at all, no.
Okay, because it's the same thing, I mean, you know, not to beat my dead horse, but the library still hasn't gotten their new markings in front of their entrance, and people will still wait to take a left-hand turn in and out of there, um, and it really does back things up, not just on the road, but within the library proper as well, so if we are gonna put lines on there to mark it, we need to, you know, make it almost slap people in the face, so they really do stop and not feel the need to get bumper-to-bumper to wait for a red light to turn, like, there's, to me, it's just mind-boggling, but, um, but, you know, people like to be right next to each other to wait, so I just would hope that there's some looking into that about how to really get people to stop with the markings.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Musto. Um, I like the idea of traffic things that can slap drivers in the face somehow, that, that's, that's inspiring, Aaron. Um, Nick, I'm just wondering, uh, yesterday or two days ago, I think Somerville, um, made this decision that they were going to eliminate parking requirements for new developments, because they felt that parking requirements, uh, encouraged sort of sprawly growth, and, uh, really don't do anything to reduce traffic, or, or, you know, create more parking spaces for folks. And I was just wondering if the traffic commission has read about that, thought about that, this seems to be a trend that's, that's, uh, that's picking up, uh, thinking of, thinking differently about parking requirements for new developments, so if, if, just wondering if they have, have discussed that.
No, not to my knowledge, I think their charge is to deal with the, um, the rules and regulations of the streets themselves, um, and, but, um, I had not seen that, I can certainly share.
Would that be more of a planning board, good, just, sorry, just a clarification, that would be a planning board issue, okay, thank you.
Yeah, more of a zoning planning board issue.
Um, is, I had a, a quick, uh, comment on this one. I watched part of that meeting, I didn't unfortunately, uh, get in it at the right time, and it was hard, the, uh, video, audio wasn't great at some points during it, but, um, wondering if there's ever been any thought to, somebody did bring this up about putting the loading zone on Adams, and the question I have with that is if you were, if there was a way to talk with some of the bigger, um, users of big trucks coming in there, for instance, probably like Dunkin's, um, the two restaurants, the liquor store, and doing something like a, a seven AM to a ten AM, or a seven to nine loading zone on Adams, where, um, you know, you would have a designated spot, and you know, that you would meet with perhaps all the businesses, and have them look at who their vendors are, and when they're coming in, and see if they can coordinate the bigger ones to come in at that time, um, you know, and that way, you, you could leave it for like, maybe two spots where you could have a designated loading zone on Adams, so they're not bringing these big trucks through, you know, the neighborhood. And then with the development, sometimes what people have done and considered is, um, you know, sometimes they get these big deliveries for these projects, and they, and they're not quick, because then they have these big trucks, and they have a little mofet that comes up and unloads the truck. So is there any thought to perhaps working out something where maybe there was an off-site, whether it was, um, I don't even know, like, off the highway or something, that they could do the unloading and bring in smaller trucks into the area, um, for, for that, because I think that those trucks, you know, having these huge trucks make this turns going through the neighborhood, even if you make it a one-way, is not a great, I don't think it's a great plan, that's just my own personal thing. Um, but I'm wondering if they could look at, or would consider doing, you know, a specific loading zone, like, meeting with the businesses that are in the area, find out when they're getting their deliveries, and, you know, try to coordinate, so they're getting them, you know, for those restaurants and things, um, in the liquor store in the morning, and not on a Friday at like, eight o'clock at night, you know what I mean? So that would be something, I think, you know, to consider, perhaps, and then just on the development which is going on, seeing if there is a way that they, um, were able to do something a little bit off-site, whether it's on Granite Ave, um, you know, they work out something with, I was gonna say the State Yard, but even, you know, um, the Legion or something, and they can unload and bring in smaller trucks into the neighborhood to deliver, so those are just some of my thoughts on that.
That's not a specific question I've asked, I'm happy to do that, and, and we'll get that over to the development team, uh, something to consider. Um, and they're still working on, they sent us a later draft of their proposed, um, management plans, um, that we expect to, um, have a chance to dive into this week. Um, and then on Adams Street, I think where we were approaching the loading zone initially, was trying to make it, um, if, if in the scenario where Franklin's a one-way, wouldn't be sacrificing any parking, because that, that space isn't necessarily used for parking today, so it's more about trying to find a place where parking is not, um, already an asset, and take that away, um, but I think as to your point, if it's a few hours, um, maybe that's something that's, that's workable. Um, and I, I can speak to, in, I, you know, go down at all times in terms of, or at Elliot, that, that loading zone is working, and folks notice not parking it, trucks know to use it, so it's, it's just about making sure the businesses, um, educate their folks as well in terms of making those deliveries and coordinating them to, to maximize, uh, what space we can provide them.
I mean, it might be just something where you're, you know, maybe you're meeting with the different business owners down there and saying, hey, like, when do you get your deliveries? You know, let's try to coordinate them and see if we can do it between, you know, seven and nine, or whatever. Um, and then, as far as the person that's doing the development, to meet with that, you know, uh, manager, and see how, how to best, you know, mitigate, um, you know, they're, they're using the, the side street, like, so that they're not bringing these huge trucks down there, because the other thing is, they bring the truck down there, and they have to unload it. And that is, you know, that takes a while, and that was, so that's my thought was, have, could they consider doing it, or should we have them consider doing it off-site, bring in a smaller truck into that area, so it's not an issue. Um, Mr. Cohen, thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Similar, similar conversation that, um, during the traffic, uh, meeting, um, Senator Alba mentioned that their, um, the loading zone at Central is working real well, um. They have it on my list to go over there and walk through it with him, because he, he's commented on that at the meeting, that that loading zone was working out real well, and that there was an enforcement policy they had for making that happen.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? So, uh, Mr. Milano, you'll get back to us on this?
Yes, we'll, um, we'll have, uh, uh, recommendations from the traffic commission, and I don't know, hopefully, uh, one of the meetings in January.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you want to do number ten?
Wait, do we do number, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we do C under nine, do we do the two-hour parking on Elliot? Was that the we did?
Yes, we're, uh, regrouping with the business owners on that one.
All right.
Um, as long as Ms. Bradley brought, brought that up, I did want to ask you, how many spots were they thinking that they would possibly switch over to two hours, any talk about that?
No, and we want to understand what the demand is for that before we make those changes, because there are, there are spots, they're a little bit farther away, up Elliot, heading towards, um, more towards Lower Mills and Milton Village, so, um, then, just understand what the, the need is, and, and if, um, they're on our, I don't know, rather than, um, you know, going in and making changes to some changes we just implemented. But, uh, understanding first what the demand is for one hour versus, two hour versus one hour right now.
Okay, great.
Everything, everything currently on Central is one hour.
Except for those few fifteen minutes around the corner, right?
Yeah, right on the, correct.
We're not losing those.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, should we do number ten? Um, it's a discussion update approval, final ARPA funding allocation, small business grants allocations. I believe you sent this through fairly late today, an update, so I actually didn't have, I saw it come in, but I was actually at another meeting, so I didn't even look at it yet.
Yeah, uh, this is, uh, apologize for that, but we are coming to the end of all the ARPA programs, and we're just finalizing a few things as late as today, so, um, ARPA has, American Rescue Plan Act has really two deadlines, the first deadline is December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, to incur or contract for projects, and they have, the monies have to be spent by December twenty thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Uh, for the most part, for the, for all the money that the town has received directly, uh, we expect to spend it all by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and be done. For the county funds that we've received, with approval of Norwalk County, we have one project, um, one, one capital project, the broadband one, that'll, uh, be, has been contracted, but will be completed in calendar year twenty-five, well ahead of the twenty twenty-six deadline. And a couple of, um, employees who are being paid with that money still, um, that will wind down in twenty twenty-five, so, uh, what I'm specifically providing an update on is the treasury money that had came to the town directly, uh, from the treasury. Um, so the accounting up team through Lisa Cool and Amy Dexter in our finance office have been finalizing, um, our projects and analyzing where they're, where they're at in terms of final money. So we expect, um, as things stand, um, to have twenty-two thousand dollars in surplus ARPA funding on the treasury side. And as I, um, just mentioned, we have a twelve thirty-one twenty-four deadline by which to obligate that funding, so my recommendation at this time is the cleanest way to spend down that money is to apply it to fiscal twenty-five, our current budget year expenses that we've incurred between July one of twenty-four and, uh, December thirty-first of twenty-four, um, so that's, so there's, you know, one vote there in terms of, um, you know, my recommendation is just to apply it to fiscal twenty-five DPW expenses, um, to, to close out that money, to offset some of our general fund expenses. And then there are two small business grants that I can provide an update for, um, but I think it would be first, make sense to talk about this, um, surplus of about twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, first.
Okay, um, so I, as I said, I hadn't had a chance to really look at that, um, from other members, any thoughts or questions? Mr. Milano?
Mr. Zoll? Sorry, it, Ms. Musto, if I could just, the, the rationale there is just, it, we don't want to fund the new position with the, the, the idea to, to target it towards DPWs to enable them to, to spend that on projects around town, and, and just put that money to work, um, so offset some current year expenses, and then replace them, uh, throughout the balance of the year. Uh, I just, I should have provided that context, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, thank you. Uh, Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Musto, and thank you, Mr. Milano, for the summary. Um, just as a, uh, you know, for, for folks who are watching, um, twenty-two K, uh, for DPW expenses. that, you know, would you sort of identify that as the, as the, what, why does that kind of stick out for you? And I know that we have, um, you know, expenses that are coming in the school side. And, uh, just wondering if that money could be applied over to, to defray some of those costs. And I understand that we don't want to necessarily spend it on new employees. But if there are, is, is it, would school funding be eligible for this or, uh, is the, is, is, or not? That's just my question. Thank you.
It's, uh, the way the rule is currently for the, the money that we've received directly from the treasury, we've elected to spend it all under what's called revenue replacement, which means can be used on anything that government provides. Entirely broad, we can, basically it's a blank check to use as we see fit. So to, to answer your question, yes, it could. In my view on this is, you know, uh, this is money that is, we're sitting here on December 17th, we've identified at a surplus. The easiest way to allocate it is to allocate it to expenses we've already incurred for reporting purposes for, um, for the federal government. Schools have a couple of projects that they're still, uh, spending, um, through the county and others. So my, my perspective on it is the easiest way to put it is that it's a budget. Every year, uh, DPW, uh, holds back on spending because of snow and ice. So this would only help them, um, uh, you know, actually use their money, uh, over the course of a fiscal year as, as we would like them to. If it works.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on this?
Ms. Musto, if there aren't any other questions, I can make a motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so Nick, you tell, tell me if I'm doing this wrong, uh, but I, I'll make a motion to approve the surplus ARPA funding on the treasury side for DPW expenses incurred in fiscal year 2025.
That works. Thank you.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, and the second part?
Sure, uh, thank you, Ms. Musto, and, uh, Mr. Wells is joining us, uh, imminently. He just joined us as a participant, so he should be, or as a panelist.
Hello?
Hi there. Go ahead, keep going. Why don't you just, I don't have an agenda with me, so why don't you just keep running it now, I'll.
All right, so well, at least we'll, we'll deal with this item that we're on. Um, Mr. Milano, do you want to explain that one? It's about the ARPA money.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, we had a number of small business grants that were awarded by the select board a couple of years ago. A set of money was set aside, it supports Milton, a bunch of entities applied and were awarded funding. And for the most part, all of those entities have spent down their award. Two approached us in recent weeks requesting that a little flexibility around their applications. And the first is Lisa Fisher Photography, who had been awarded $19,240. Excuse me. She had, uh, requested for a number of categories, including some assistance with marketing, some staff assistance, some software assistance and equipment. And she approached us requesting that, uh, some of the grant be allowed to be reallocated towards equipment to buy replacement cameras. As she didn't, uh, did not need the staff support she thought she did. So she had requested $4,800 in staff assistance. Has used about half of that, but is asking for the balance of it to be reallocated to equipment rather than staff support. So that she can, um, fund some replacement equipment for her, for her business. And then the second one was from Andrew's Painting. And again, they had, they had been awarded $50,000, $35,000 of which was for vehicle repair and maintenance, 5,000 for equipment, 5,000 for advertising, 5,000 to try to, um, help, um, hire some additional staff. Uh, and likewise, he, um, was not, uh, did not end up hiring that additional staff, um, as the, the help was not there. And is requesting that in lieu of spending the 5,000 additional staff, again, that he be able to buy some equipment, a paint sprayer, um, and other equipment for his, for his business, uh, in lieu of what had been part of the application. So those are two changes, uh, broadly similar in nature. A change for Lisa Fisher Photography to use, um, about $2,200 for, um, equipment and for Andrew's Painting to use $5,000 for equipment.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you. Uh, Nick, did they give you any reason why they could not hire staff for this? They've had this, I, I can remember when Mike and I approved this. They've had this for a while. Was there issues just with getting staff or it's just interesting that they both have the same thing?
Yeah, I think, um, so to my understanding for Lisa Fisher, um, I think she just overestimated the kind of staff support she thought she would need, uh, for her projects. It turned, it just didn't turn out it would, um, it made sense for her business to, um, increase staffing. A lot of it was she was able to manage and she used some of it for staffing. She just didn't use all of it. And then for Andrew's Painting, um, what he explained to me is, you know, the market in terms of that, the trades, uh, was in, was in high demand. So staffing was, finding the help was, um, harder than he had anticipated. And then he ended up not adding staffing, um, that he had expected to when he was initially applying.
Yeah, that may, that's kind of what I was looking for is whether or not it was just hard to find the staffing. So in his original proposal, I know that he had put in for equipment. In hers, she did not.
Correct.
Was there any, and I, I can't remember, it was a while ago, but was there, and I might've even been when Anne Marie was here, but was there, is there anything that said that, that hers could not be used for equipment?
No, that's why we're here is because she didn't, it wasn't requested and it would be, um, a slight, it would be a change in what, um, the board had approved for her. Uh, it was, yeah, there wasn't equipment included and for Andrew's Painting, it was, he was, he had, he'd asked for 5,000 equipment, is now revising, that's a 10,000 total.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Musto. So, um, Mr. Milano, in Ms. Fisher's original grant application, she had identified $4,800 for a staff assistant.
Yes.
And that is, so was she able to have, she was able to spend 2,000 on a staff assistant and then, but then not the remainder of it?
Correct, she has, uh, about $2,200 outstanding in that category.
Okay, but she doesn't have somebody in there that she would continue to pay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Milano?
Yes.
Um, you keep saying 22 and in your email today it says 28?
Oh, yeah, no, I misspoke in the email. Uh, I had thought it was 2816, but it was 2186, so I'm sorry, $2,200.
$2,200, okay. And is that what the, if we, if a motion was to be made, it would be made for $2,200?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other, uh, Mr. Wells?
I'm gonna make that motion, um, Madam Chair, in the amount of 2,200 for Lisa Fisher Photography and just give me the amount for Tomato Painting?
Yeah, 5,000.
5,000?
Yes.
5,000 for the amount of, for, um, Tomato Painting. I may have named the company wrong.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, so Mr. Zoll is the second, um, and we can just, we don't need any, um, roll call now, do we?
No, we do, because we're on Zoom.
On Zoom, okay. So I'll start with Chair Wells.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, Mr. Wells, while you were gone, we tried to do a lot of the, um, license renewals and things like that. So we did get through quite a bit, but the, um, but we're gonna go back to, um, number, uh.
To the Pledge of Allegiance? I hope not.
Do you want to leave the meeting, Mr. Wells?
No, so I'll, um, so that's, did you, did you, did Chief Madden, did you, did you handle Chief Madden?
Yeah, so we did Chief Madden, he came and, uh, we've done, I, I can lead you through where we've done, but we've done basically Chief Madden and items number nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. So we're on number, um, five. We'll start, so we're gonna go back to number five and then, um, then we're gonna talk.
Pressing update, Mass School Building Authority, MSBA. So,
Yep.
Mr. Milano, I wanna, wanna let you and then, um, I was there for most of it, so then, um, why don't you start, Nick, and then John, if you have, Mr. Cohen, if any of the members have any questions, thanks. We go a favor. Why don't you go and paint the picture, Nick, as to where we are and what happened, the good news about what happened?
Correct. Uh, so, um, last week, uh, the Massachusetts School Building Authority Board of Directors meeting was posted that, um, for Friday, uh, December 13th, they would be voting on invitations to what's called eligibility period, which is the first step in the MSBA project. And Milton was included on that list of communities at the Board of Directors meeting, um, on Friday afternoon. They, the board, the board formally voted to approve, uh, Milton's, um, statement of interest and application to the MSBA program with a start date of May 1st. So commencing May 1st, uh, Milton is in the MSBA program, um, for a school project. They sent us a, a letter on Friday afternoon, uh, with a little bit more details that Milton has been invited in to study, um, the application, the school application was for Cunningham School for a pre-K to five or a pre-K 7, 8, uh, facility. And so that official news came out on Friday, uh, which, um, you know, as if we go through the MSBA process, there is a significant source of funding, uh, that would be coming back to the town through the project, um, through the reimbursement. And so it's, it's an avenue to secure, uh, significant grant funding for a school project, uh, that, if the town were to take it on. I do have a couple of slides to, to go through what the MSBA process is gonna look like in a little more detail. Happy to go through those, um, if that'd be helpful. Um, can do that now or, or after?
Go ahead, go ahead. I think you should, I've already seen it, but go ahead.
Okay. So just give me a moment, I'll get my screen up here. And just as kind of a, the MSBA process has a lot of, uh, nomenclature and terminology that we'll all get used to over the next couple of years, but coming in, uh, kinda green, uh, it might be a little foreign, but I'll try to explain it, uh, without necessarily using all of their terminology. Anyway, as I was mentioning, uh, the board approved, um, as recommendation that Milton be invited into eligibility period, which is the first step in the MSBA process. That eligibility period will start on May 1st. Uh, there are a number of, um, asks that the town has to complete during that period. And I'll go through those in a moment in a little more detail. Um, I'll just note that with the February special town meeting coming up, um, it is always helpful to get things out of the way as soon as possible. Just to keep that process moving, the MSBA process can be long. So any actions, um, a town can take to check things off, um, is helpful just to kind of keep in that calendar moving. Eligibility period, uh, is where you essentially uh, commit to participate in the MSBA program, form a school building committee, uh, those are the first two actions. The initial ICC is the initial compliance certification, which says will abide by the MSBA rules. That needs to be signed by the select board and the school committee. Our school building committee needs to be formed. While Milton has a school building committee today, it has an, it's a nine-member committee, uh, and those members currently as comprised do not meet the MSBA's requirements for a school building committee. So the school committee, to my understanding, is working on, um, a warrant article that will, um, increase that membership to add, uh, the positions that are required under the MSBA program, which are a number of professional and staff position, uh, more than anything. The next, um, big thing and, um, eligibility period is, is reaching agreement with the MSBA about what configurations will be studied and what the enrollment would be at those schools. So for Milton, according to the board action letter, it's a pre-K to five building or pre-K 7, 8. So, um, MSBA and the town need to reach an agreement on the enrollment of pre-K students that would be supported by a new facility or a, a project, I should say, with MSBA and reach agreement on what the enrollment of those two configurations would be. MSBA will review, um, census data, um, NASDAQ projections and other projections, and they do projections themselves and then meet with the town to review those. So that's, that's one of the key, uh, decisions. So that'll be, let's say, just for argument's sake, it's a grade seven, eight, uh, with 575 students. Like that is, that will be locked in during this initial eligibility period. Uh, there's other work that the town and MSBA do together around, uh, maintenance of how, how the town maintains, uh, school buildings, its educational profile, how it delivers its services. Um, and then the big, um, task is to secure appropriation for the feasibility study. So the feasibility study will evaluate all the options, um, that you agree to study with MSBA, resulting in a preferred option and then resulting in a schematic design of that preferred option that will then go to voters. So it's, it's a lengthy study process. The more number of configurations that are studied, the more expensive these can be. Excuse me, and last night the school building committee did recommend an article, or did submit an article, I should say, to appropriate $1.5 million, um, for feasibility study. Um, and as with any, um, work that we do in conjunction with the MSBA, money spent during the feasibility study will be reimbursed at the reimbursement rate, which we expect to be about 45%. So if the town appropriates $1.5 million, it can expect to potentially, it doesn't need to spend all of it, depending on what our contracts with our professional consultants are. But whatever, um, dollars are spent will be reimbursed by the MSBA as long as they're for eligible expenses at 45%, uh, whatever the reimbursement rate is. So once we complete all these tasks, um, and we have 270 days to do so, the town needs to go back to a board of directors meeting to get approval to move into feasibility study. So that's, that's initial first phase that commences technically May 1st, but as I noted, anything that can be done, um, now to kind of have things, um, lined up will be helpful and let us focus on the other action items that we need to complete with MSBA during this phase. Module titles come from the MSBA themselves, so this is module one, the eligibility period. So after the board of directors meeting where they invite Milton to collaborate on the feasibility study, you have to form the project team. That includes procuring an onus project manager. As you may know, the town has already done that. EMA Consultants is on board as an OPM. Uh, we expect the MSBA will require, uh, the town to go through that procurement process again as they like to participate in reviewing, um, the process the town takes to select an OPM. Uh, the town will also need to select a designer. And again, while we have a designer under contract, the MSBA, um, has its own designer selection process and its own designer selection panel. So we'll have to, we, we'll have to go through that process as well. The designer selection panel is comprised of MSBA staff, board, board members, as well as three representatives from Milton. So it's not a town selection on the designer, but it's a decision made with, um, other members of the designer selection panel. This process can take six months to go through the two procurements. Maybe longer, depending on, um, how long it takes to, to get documents out, get people back and start interviewing. Once the project team is formed, then you're diving into the Plumberade Sign Program where you're actually studying all the various configurations that the MSBA requires, which includes, um, uh, by law, you have to do, you have to study a repair of the building you apply for, so a repair to Cunningham. You have to, you have to study by law and addition renovation at the building we applied for. So Cunningham would be looking at addition renovation option. Um, and then any new options, um, that are included, uh, would be studied at this phase. Um, those put all the initial ones together, submit it to MSBA, get review comments, then move, um, to another study called the Preferred Schematic Report, which is another report submitting to the FBA. And at the end of that, the town or district states, the school building committee in this case, would state what its preferred option is. And that report will include all the various options that have been studied, estimated costs and identify what the, um, preferred option is. At that point, the MSBA Board of Directors would then approve to, uh, approve that preferred option at a board meeting and the town would move into schematic design where that design gets flushed out a lot more to a point where, um, we have cost estimates and you go to town meeting, you go to the ballot and you, um, need a vote for this MSBA. And it's at that point, once the schematic design is finished, where, you know, you would say the project is $173 million middle school, the reimbursement rate is 45%, the MSBA's maximum grant will be $50 million using round numbers. So all of that information will be clear and finalized at the end of the schematic, uh, report in terms of what the maximum cost, um, will be per the cost estimate and the maximum grants that we can expect from the MSBA. Um, and I just, I, I was looking at the MSBA website and just pulled a couple of examples, um, of what timelines look like and what processes look like. Canton, um, is doing a. Canton um is doing a middle school as well. This is a five to eight, uh, but more than a thousand students. So it's a big project. Um. And they just had their votes in the past few weeks, but they're invited in um. For eligibility period back in March of twenty-two. And as you can see, they got to project scope and budget, which is completion of the schematic design in August of um twenty twenty-four. So that's like two and a half years. Um, Quincy for their elementary school, which the city council in Quincy, I don't believe has voted on quite yet, but is expected to soon. They started in April twenty twenty-one. That was about a three-year process to get to um the the town vote. And um two other examples, Dedham, again, they're invited in April twenty-one. They're voting uh now. So another, you know, two and a half years-ish. Um, excuse me, three and a half years um roughly. And then I I worked on a project in Marlboro, so I just pulled those numbers and that again was close to that two-year timeline. Um, but that's a city, so much faster process in terms of getting approvals. So. I think you can picture uh between eligibility period starting, started. Um, getting to a schematic design where the town is voting on a school project is anywhere within that two, two and a half to three-year timeframe. Um, and that's that's just what I've got in terms of the background and process. Um. Happy to take any questions if folks have any um.
No, there was a lot of questions. So go ahead, John. Mr. Cohen.
On the formation of the school committee you mentioned early on, um, and you talked about how we. Uh, will we have two school committees, building committees, or just one?
No, there there needs to be just one school building committee for Milton that the MSBA would recognize. So um. Since I I think there's, you know, there's really two pathways there. It's. There's an existing one. So the authorization of town meeting for that committee can be amended to increase the membership. Um, the other way to go would be to institute a new school building committee. Um. But there there needs to be one school building committee that we submit to the MSBA as our, as the town's representatives.
And and they have specific rules for that. I've seen the form of who can be on it and everything.
Right. And typically, in my experience, you know, there there will be staff positions, the manager, the town manager, town administrator, um, my facilities director, the superintendent, um, sometimes the business. Um, the assistant superintendent for business oper- and operations. Um, those type positions are are on them usually as non-voting members. Um, and the residents of the community serve as the as the voting members and and um and their in those capacities.
Do you have that form handy you could show?
I do. If you give me a moment. Let's go over the pages, but this is the first page. Um. So MCTPO certified as a permanent certification, local CEO was a select board representative, administrator and manager, that's myself, school committee member, superintendent of schools. Local official responsible for building maintenance would be consolidated facilities. Representative authorized by a lot of construct buildings, you know, a school committee member or select board member. So. People's names can appear in multiple places for the MSBA's um purposes. The school principal is required. So in this case, it would be the Cunningham School Principal is uh expected to be a member. Um, member knowledgeable in educational mission. Again, that would be, you know, the superintendent of the school prin- principal whose name could appear there. Local official or member of the local finance committee uh for Milton could be a warrant committee member. And then um the others are, this is where you would put, you know, members of the community at large. And you can have as many or as few as you like. Um, but that's. That's the MSBA form that they will, um, we will have to submit um once that school building committee is is formed.
And this and this is step one in the um eligibility module. I mean, step two in the eligibility module, the first module.
Correct.
First thirty days, I think they listed as or something like that.
Uh, yeah.
Again, everybody should also realize that our uh commencement date is May first. So we can't do, I mean, we can do all this preparation between now and May first, but we can't even submit anything until May first.
That's right.
Dotting May first.
Just just to, and I, one second, Mr. Zol, I do see you, just just to add to that. Um, they were pretty clear with us on Friday that they don't expect. Much to be done. From the committee between now and May first. They don't expect a lot to be done during the period. Is that okay, Mr. Cohen? And then you unmute it. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Zol.
Mr. Cohen, your hand's still up, so I don't want to cut you off. You still have. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, so you know, this is, I think. Tremendous news, uh, and and everyone should be thrilled uh about this. This is uh something that the school building committee has been working for. Six years to do. This is definitely not the first time we put in for MSBA. Um, but I I think as a town, we owe debt of gratitude to all of the members of the school building committee that have worked. So hard and tirelessly to get us to this very, very exciting point. Um, I think, you know, Mr. Milano, you've done a really good job of sort of walking us through this process here. And I think what we can see through that process is that a lot of what we've uh. Looked at over the course of the last six years and and what the school building committee has has worked at to figure out um options and opportunities. Has, you know, this is an opportunity to stress test that with with the state. Um, and I think it's a, it's. I think safe to say that the state maybe has a mixed opinion of Milton at the moment. So the fact that the state is recognizing. The school building, you know, the school overcrowding crisis to the extent that they're willing to step in and fund us, we, you know, we should be very grateful for that. Uh, and and also just acknowledge that um they have a high bar for this. And we have cleared that high bar. It's, I'm not sure if we should be proud that we've, we're so crowded that we've cleared the bar, but we have. Um, but we're we're in a really good place right now. Uh, thanks very much to the school building committee and their hard work um a- a- after after six years. Um, and and I will add too that I know, and I'm sure Mr. Wells, you've heard this from MSBA. That part of the um the attractiveness of the the Milton. Application was the fact that we have land that's been approved by town meeting for a school. Now. I will add the caveat that, of course, they're going to go back, as as Mr. Milano said, and look at multiple options around town. This will be a process that. Will will um again, stress test the entire assumption, but the fact that we have land that we don't have to pay for. Uh, that is uh ready and in an educational campus uh to be used for a school was a was a positive. So I think there's been so many. People that have worked so hard. A lot of them are sitting on this call. Some of them are probably watching. Mr. O'Rourke, of course, the chair of the school building committee. Um, we owe a great debt of data, a great debt, great debt of gratitude to him for his work. Uh, but we're we're just in a really great, exciting place. I agree. We don't have. Have to do a ton of work over the next couple of months, but anything that we can do so that we can hit the ground running in May. Uh, and and make sure that we hit our all of our deadlines uh will be great. So it wasn't really a question, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. It was more of a statement. I'm just. Very excited about this. I think as you are and as I think everybody is. So I just wanted to uh to to opine for a moment. Thanks for your indulgence.
Very welcome. Mr. Cohen, you have another question.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to add what Ben had said, and we had mentioned it last night at the school building committee meeting. Um. You you know, you you go from the accolades to, oh, God, now, oh, we, now we have to do it. So we had automatically, all of us had taken off our. Gee, this is great hat and put on our, okay, now we gotta do it hat. So that's what, you know, I'm I'm, I jumped from. From the accolade to the 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 celebration to the, okay, now we gotta go do it. And we all did too last night.
So we go to find May.
Ms. Musto has her hand up, Mr. Cohen.
Sorry, I didn't, I couldn't see it. I. Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Musto. Thank, thank you, Mr. Zol. My bad.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so definitely, this is great news um that we've been accepted into this process. Um, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Milano. So you've gone over the timeline a little bit, which is good. The letter, um, it said two different things, you know, that you would evaluate for two different options. Is that something that they normally do in those letters? Um. For instance, I know that our application was for the elementary, but now they are allowing either or in their letter. So I'm just trying to understand the process with that. Is that a common thing? My second question is. Um, how many other towns were admitted with us? I didn't um specifically look at that, but.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. And in the past, how many have made it past this original? Um, step, just to try to get a sense of, you know, what they've done in the past.
Fair. Um, so in terms of the board letter uh that you're referencing. I don't know that answer. I I probably should. Um, I think um. I think what, the better, I think the right way to think about it, in my view, is. What will happen in this eligibility period is is the MSBA and the town will agree as to what will be studied. So. The board action letter says a pre-K to five or a seven and eight with pre-K. So my expectation is the MSBA is going to say, hey, Milton, here are your two options. You're going to be studying a pre-K five. Or five hundred kids, and you're going to study a grade seven and eight with pre-K for six hundred students. So. Whatever those numbers are, and I'm just making numbers up there, but I believe that's what um we should expect to see. Um, and but I I don't have a good answer for that at this time. I'll just say, you know, I I read the letter the same way as you, is that we're studying. The MSBA process, we have to study Cunningham. And then the MSBA is is working with us on a pre, a new pre-K five. Or a new. Grade seven, eight with pre-K. So it's really three kind of things that will be studied. What can be done at Cunningham? What would a new pre-K five look like? What would a new grade seven, eight with pre-K look like? So it's really kind of three buckets as I read the letter. And then we'll get a better sense of that as we go through eligibility period here.
And 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 as a, as a follow-up, if I may, um. So we talked there were twenty-two schools invited. I'm just trying to get a sense of. In the past, like year or two, when they're, when they start off with that number. Typically, how many make it to the next stage, or you know, to the final stage, I should really say. What's, what's.
I don't know in terms of.
I'm trying to get a sense, you know?
I I think this is a pretty low bar to to cross. Getting through eligibility period is not. Um, this is not where districts get tripped up. It's it's really at the later point when you're voting on the full project. I worked in Medfield. We had a failed vote with MSBA. Medfield was ironically invited back into the MSBA. So. They had a failed vote. MSBA said, thanks, you're out of the program. And then they were invited back in this year, three years after that point. Um, so it's typically a later phase where a district would get dropped from the MSBA program, not at this stage. So I I would be surprised if it was any more than than one in recent years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen, I'm going to come back to you. Ms. Musto, your hands up. You're good. Okay, so just um. I followed, I followed the um. The meeting very closely. Um. When it was done, I I'm very lucky that uh. Two of my new colleagues in January were both recipients to other communities at the same time, and they were also both on the call. One of them is a. Actually, a school committee current, school committee member currently in another community. Um, so there were forty-seven applications. Am I right? Forty-seven or forty-eight applications? They took, but one of the things that determines each year annually is to how many awards, how many numbers are picked. Is the type of schools are applied for. Um, if there are a lot of high schools in a given year. The amount of the number is going to be reduced. I think. I only heard one. High school of the twenty-two. I think it was. Am I correct? There was a, there was a VOTEC in there. That they took, because there was, there were a lot of comments from that community about it, about supporting vocational technical. Um, high schools. I think there was only one. Everything else was either a middle or a. Um, an elementary. And as far as the option question, there was one other in the same boat as us that were given an option of. Um, two different types of schools, you know, two talk or two different types in in this year's round. And so I hope that kind of, because those are things I was listening to intently on the call. They were very thorough and I'll wait till I. Make my comments on the end, but they were very, very thorough on the way they did this. Mr. Cohen.
Yep, um, Nick had shown me today, I forget what the school was, Nick, but it was um. What they had a whole eight and a half by eleven page of options that they were exploring at that particular stage, whatever that's, I'm not suggesting that, but it just. What can be considered, that that was what can, can be considered. And I I did a lot of research too, as far as Roxanne's question was concerned. In twenty twenty-three, December twenty twenty-three, nineteen towns were invited into the eligibility period. And only two, Needham and South Hadley, made it to the feasibility by October of this year. So we're we're basically looking at us best and and Needham had a May one commencement date. South Hadley had a March. Fourth commencement date, so they had extra time. So, you know, you're talking October of twenty twenty-five before we. Finish our. Eligibility period. And that's a, you know, there's not very many solid dates at this stage of the game, but that's one of them. And you'll also see in the letter from on Friday. That the MSBA is saying that July twenty-first of twenty twenty-seven is the first time we can. Get approved for the money to start the actual design for construction. So that data is cat, that's another one of those not varying, because that's when they will have, they have budgeted the money for us. So it specifically states, if you look to the letter, July first, twenty twenty-seven, that's the first we'll know. When we actually are given the money and we proceed to design and then construction from there. I did a little work.
Mr. Zol.
Thanks.
Oh, thank you. Um, and it, and just confirming again, Mr. Cohen, you're all done. You've got your hand up still. That's okay. I just, just, I don't want to interrupt anybody.
He's excited tonight.
Yeah, I'm excited. I think everyone should be excited. Uh, I I didn't mention, but I I should have mentioned this, that I think. One of the um, the the real hallmarks that of the school building committee's work over the last. Six years has always been to look at different options as they pop up. And uh, you know, when there was potentially landed FOMPON that was available. They they have always pivoted to look at all possible alternatives. And and when we were discussing the school in July and in August. Uh, Mr. O'Rourke, you know, had, we had asked that question of the school building committee. And uh, you know, like, what happens if we're doing this? And then the MSBA money comes through and, you know, they, there was always this. Sort of dual-track approach. Sometimes it was like three tracks of trying to make sure that we were keeping all of our options open. So I think. You know, Mr. Cohen, hi- his comments are are well-taken in terms of like the timing and. And the sort of continued uncertainty, but I think one thing that we know for certain is that we are overcrowded as a school. That's what Massachusetts has confirmed for us. That's something that we've known for for many years in this town. Uh, and I have full faith and confidence in our 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 school building committee's ability to to manage this process and and to continue pushing forward. Uh, with that work. Um, and I hope that you guys didn't drink too much champagne last night, John. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, you still have your hand up. You all set?
No, I did have uh uh on that line of the the options and 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 everything. I also wonder at this stage of the game, early on, we had a whole lot of, and I hear this from a lot of parents. I hear this from a lot of parents. Early on, we had a lot of short-term options. I don't know, Nick, how that fits into this, because now that we have this. Extended, you know, we got a ways to go here. Um, are we going to look into those short-term options? I know we have been talking about the fourth floor on Cunningham, but I don't know where that's gone. Again, I'm just. What I'm hearing from people, and I'll put my hand down then. I'm good.
Uh, yes, the school committee did um, has previously voted to um request additional funding for the Cunningham fourth floor in order to keep that project going. Um, so that's that's the primary kind of um. Focus project that that I've been apprised of, but there may be other things that they've been looking at, knowing now we're on a longer term time horizon until a new building opens.
We good? Can I? Say a couple of things? So there's a lot of thank yous in here that we need, and I just want to, there's some things that that um. Nick, you and I were at, there were, and that was also. One, I think, that Mr. Cohen was at. So. Um, I want to start first by thanking former school committee member Ada Rose Moun, and she probably has no idea I'm going to say this tonight, but. She was the first one, and I don't know how many years ago, because I think I'm looking at the screen tonight. I. I think I'm the only one left on the board that was here when she first came forward and. We first. Partnered with the school committee to make the first request for um school building committee assistance, and even though it was thought to be a long shot. Um. She was adamant in doing all the work and making the effort back then on behalf of the school committee and the children in this town, and I give a lot of credit for that. Second, um. Like many, and Nick, you and I have talked about it a lot, you know, especially given the amount of money we received years ago, how would we do? And I I really want to. Echo and paint the picture here as to one, it, to me, it started to change, which was when we had the. when we had the, the last, most recent site visit at the Cunningham. Um, not even, is it even two months ago, Nick? I don't even think it's two months ago since they first came out here. I don't know, maybe five weeks ago. But in that meeting, the entire MSBA team came out, and it was more than just the school building committee they want to hear from. They wanted to hear from everyone. And I give a lot of credit to both Principal Holly Conkner from the Collicott and Principal Jonathan Rudden from the Cunningham, who really were able to paint the picture of what day-to-day, um, life is like in these schools today and able to, um, really articulate the need in a way that you can't do it in a PowerPoint or on a screen or an email. They were able to do it in real life, um, verbiage, if you want to use. And also like Tom McCarthy, who came in for Bill, Bill Ritchie, the conditions of the building, things of that nature. Um, Superintendent Burrows. I don't remember if Glenn was, if system, former assistant superintendent, was there or if it was the new assistant, and I, I'm sorry if I heard Katie's last name slips me at this moment. I think that was the first time. But that, I felt that day, and Nick, you and I talked about it when we left, that they had really paid, that the MSBA team had really paid attention and that, um, we were going to have a chance. And this brings me to my final point, which, on that was that I really want to thank Bill Driscoll, Representative Bill Driscoll, um, reached out to the legislative people from MSBA, and, and they even willing to talk to me, and I'm not even in office yet, and I was able to at least articulate how strong this was. And but he really carried, um, the ball there for this town on this. And that was after that, that you could just see that we were now going to be in the twenty-two. And to the final point, Mr. Zoll, I, I have to say this with all sincerity and in a role that I never pictured I'd be in. Um, there's been nothing but the warmest of collegiality towards this town in every aspect, including, um, the most, the toughest thing we've gone through, which is the MVP, and nothing but support and, and, uh, as I said, collegiality or, or, um, partnership towards every aspect of it. And I'm really grateful, and I really want to thank Trevor Goldberg and all of the, all of the members of her team from MSBA who really did a tremendous job. As you said, there were forty-seven applicants, they only picked twenty-two. And um, that's, Nick, that's a credit to you as well, because you knew a little bit of the inside scoop, and it was obvious that day that they all knew who you were and your relationship with them in the past clearly paid a big role in that. And as I've said from the beginning, we need to be strategic in this whole thing. We've got a long way to go. But this means to Mr. Zoll's point, this is going to mean millions of dollars towards a new school paid for by the Commonwealth. It will not have to be borne by the residents of this town. That's a really important thing, Milton. So that's why I have to say, Mr. Cohen, your hands up again. So I'll go back to you one last time, and then do we, do we have to make a motion on this?
I'll be quick. I just, I just had, I, I just, I got my moving forward hat on again, and I just had a horrible thought. I read in the regulations that if we jumpstart anything, we can be disqualified. So I think we need, and I'll bring it up in school building, but I think we need to be careful about doing anything to Cunningham. You know what I mean? Because it clearly states that in there. Anyway, just had that thought last second.
So they were pretty clear in meetings about the things you can do and you can't do. And the things that they concern, that concern them are things that you may do. Nick, you can tell me if I'm wrong. You can't go back and ask for reimbursement under the grant. Um, there are a few communities in that category that, um, had applied previously and lost. And, um, this is a new application for them many years later. They can't, they can't use any of this award towards what they did five or six years ago. Nick, you can correct this.
That's, that's right. And I think add to Mr. Cohen's point, that's actually a good thing we should put on our radar, that we may, we may look at a minor renovation in the intervening time period and just so that we can hear it from us and not the other way around. That's, that's a good point. Now we'll make sure to do that. Thank you for, um, for that.
I, I think that came up in the meeting that night, that day when we were cutting him. I think we, I think in the site visit, I remember Tom McCarthy spoke to it. That did come up. So, um, but you're right. I mean, that's, I mean, we need to be strategic in this. This is a lot of work. This is significant. No one would have, a lot of people would never thought would get a new school building, but it, it's a testament to everyone in the public schools, prior staff and past staff and the leadership and, um, everyone who's been involved in this. So are we, do we need a vote on this? Right? I'm, I'm like, no.
No one must need it.
So are we, are we good on this? Okay. I just lost my agenda. Where did my agenda go? Um, anyway, as I got it back. Um, all right, where are we now? Uh, so that's item five, item six. Okay, item six. So discuss an updated approval special town meeting, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, special town meeting articles. So one is potential article, I'm gonna say feasibility study schematic design appropriation. And two will be a potential decree, MSBA from updated school building committee to comply with MSBA requirements. So we're not going to do that tonight. We're going to do that at a future meeting, correct? So am I wrong?
So we don't have the SBC, the school building committee article we don't have yet, school committee. I expect we'll pick that up tomorrow. Building committee did recommend an article last night. Um, I only, I was only able to distribute it afternoon, so happy to regroup on that with the board at a later date. But we would want to get it to the, um, warrant committee by early January, I'd say, so that they can do their work as well.
Okay, because I haven't even seen it yet. So if that's, if it's okay with the members, could we put this off to the next meeting? So we get it to the warrant committee in a timely fashion?
No objection, Mr. Chair, from me.
That sounds fine.
Mr. Cohen, your hands up again?
I was, I was, I was going to, am I unmuted? Yes, I was going to ask if
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm good. I was going to ask if we could move up item seven because, after these couple, because there's a lot of items in six that really are affected by seven. And I don't know if that's possible to do something out of order, but I'm just asking.
I don't think we're going to do anything on seven tonight. I don't think we're going to do anything on six tonight. I think we're going to postpone it to a later, oh, six. You're talking six, A, one and two?
Well, there's a bunch of other things in there too. I just would prefer to talk about seven before this, if it was possible.
Okay, so let me think how I'm going to do this. All right. So why don't we suspend any future discussion on six? I'm going to move us up to item seven.
Ms. Bradley has her hand up, Mr. Chair. I know you're working on small screen.
Absolutely. No worries, Mr. Chair. You're trying to do a lot right now. I would just like clarification on what Mr. Cohen thinks has to do, what article numbers have to do with the, um, upcoming budget override?
I just, more than, I probably, I just think that article seven is more critical than anything right now, especially to
Well, we're going to talk about everything, correct, Mr. Chair? We're not going to not talk about
So why don't we, so I, I don't think we need to do seven for, I don't see anything in there that needs is seven, what we're going to talk about is seven is not going to be in the February special town meeting. So now that I look, I'm, I'm reading it off my phone, so I apologize.
If Mr. Cohen could just tell us which, um, warrant article he's, he's actually worried about that has to do with item number seven on today's list, that would be, um, that would help me.
I'm worried about asking for a tax break when we're going to be asking for an override specifically.
So that's all, the home rule petition, item, is that the one that you're referring to, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, yeah.
So item six.
Yeah.
Why don't we do this then? So I'm going to defer
We got a hot sell on this, so.
So I'm going to do this just, I'm going to, I think, why do this? This is item number seven, no, six, six. So I'm going to defer our discussion on item seven to a future, the next meeting and all the others I'm going to go through, and then we'll go to item seven. So on item six, so one and two, Nick, do you want to speak to those more? And then?
No, I, I think I've distributed information to the board and we can regroup at a future meeting on it.
Do we have any other? Go ahead, Mrs. Zoll.
Just a quick question, uh, for Mr. Milano. Um, when would we need to meet in order to get the, uh, the, the warrant articles in front of the warrant committee uh, in a timely fashion? Could just, just knowing that there are a few holidays coming up.
Uh, yes, I think our, our scheduled meeting is the second January, uh, second weekend, excuse me, in January, which would be the fourteenth, which is pretty late. So whether, uh, we find a time for a special meeting, um, uh, you know, in the first week of January after the holiday perhaps, or, um, that first full week of January. So I can regroup with the board and poll folks for their availability, perhaps resume call just to
And I just, I thought that that might be the case, and I know that I'm usually the reason for the second, um, the Tuesday being of choice, but I can make the first Tuesday in January work if it works for others. So, um, if, I, I just wanted to float that out there for, and I guess we could be talking that. But sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to
That's fine. That's fine. So I, I was going to say the same thing. So what I'm, why don't we do that? So to, I'll be guided by what Mr. Milano comes to, what we all agree, whatever's earlier that we can do just to make this streamlinedness and a quicker process for the warrant committee. I'm fine with that if everybody else is. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there anything that is listed in the warrant articles this evening that we could vote on to start getting to the warrant committee? So they can start getting their work done and we're not bombarding them on the seventh or the fourteenth with twelve warrant articles.
Well, I'm ready to go with that if you are.
Let's giddy up.
All right. So, uh, item number three, appropriation from Big Access Enterprises Fund for clipping the new meeting room in the former fire headquarters building for televised meetings. Are we all okay with that? Okay, item number, all right. So I'm just going to keep going. Nope. We're going to vote.
Do you want a motion at the end?
Yep, and we'll do a motion at the end. Uh, home rule petition for legal licenses on premises consumption, restaurants, uh, item number four. Do we have a number on this, what it's going to be yet, Mr. Milano? Or do we have to wait? Can we wait till later?
Yes, the draft, um, in the packet reviewed with, um, Tom Council, um, including John Flynn, requests five additional licenses in the town.
Okay. Are we all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
A home rule appropriation for lead lines replacement program.
Mr. Chair, you missed, uh, number, Roman numeral five.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I missed five. Tom by our amendment chapter one of five alcohol beverages. We all good with that? That's on the, um, involving the duck in that. I think we're all good with that. Okay, okay. So now I'm going to jump to seven. Prophecy for lead lines replacement program for funding from state revolving fund. That's a zero base, right, Mr. Milano? We've talked about that in the past. Zero, um,
Yep, this is specifically for lead line, uh, services and related work to, um, quantify lead services and start removing, uh, lead line.
Go with nine? Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to move this along, but, uh, nine, ZBA amendment regarding accessory dwelling units, and that's a planning board article.
So for, uh, just Mr. Chair, so items, Roman numerals nine, ten and eleven, um, of those, um, I believe ten has been approved by the planning board, um, but nine in, I'm sorry, ten and eleven have been approved, um, by the planning board. Number nine is not yet ready.
Okay, so we're going to defer that one. So here I'm going to go, I'm going to, because this wasn't in here, I don't see this. So I think I need two motions. So I need a motion first from someone to open the warrant, to have a motion for, so I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion to open the warrant.
Motion made by Ms. Bradley, second by Ms. Musto. Vote, call, vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Okay, now, I'm making a motion to approve, um, the following amendments under item six, special town meeting articles. Um, article one, did I, did we include one?
No, we're going right to
Okay, so we didn't, so we didn't do one or two. Okay, so we're going to start with three, item, so item three, item four, item five, item seven, item eight. Any other, we have any other article? Do we have any other potential?
But have you seen ten and eleven?
We haven't seen them though.
No, we haven't seen them.
I'm not ready to vote on something I haven't seen.
Yeah, so that's why I didn't include those. I didn't include ten and eleven. Um, but twelve, are there any other potential articles, Mr. Milano, at this point, that we're going to vote on tonight?
We're voting on this evening, no, but, uh, we've been in conversations, uh, with Ms. Bradley in terms of the lighting one, which, um, we would, nothing's been circulated on that quite yet.
Nope.
So we are going to come back to that, that was broadly, that will be a potential, that, out of potential articles, that's a potential article, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, it absolutely is. We just haven't crossed our Ts and dotted our Is.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I understand that Mr. Cohen may have his, um, thoughts about the home rule petition, uh, which is, a, a, as a reminder to those who are listening, uh, a way that makes, um, the poorest seniors in Milton, uh, gives them a property tax break. Um, and I understand why you would, you know, maybe want to have a discussion at town meeting about that. Um, but this is work that's been done by both Mr. Milano and Mr. Connors. Um, it's a, it's a, uh, it's modeled on something that happens in other communities. Uh, and I would imagine that many people would be, uh, interested in having a discussion at town meeting about whether or not we can give our uh, our poorest seniors, uh, a tax break. It's, it, the, the math on it is, is low. Um, I understand that there are other concerns, but I, I think it would be of, uh, of a disservice if we leave it off of the warrant. Um, if you'd like to discuss it more at a future meeting about whether or not we should include it, that's totally fine, but this is the first objection that we've heard of it, and it's a little surprising to me that, um, it's not going through, uh, considering the subject matter.
Okay.
That was, Mr. Cohen, if he wants to respond to it first, Mr. Musto.
So I just want to clarify what I did. I did not, all I did was put us in a position to defer it, to speak to your second point at a, at a later minute. That's all I did. Um, no way, shape or form are we eliminating that tonight. I didn't do that. So, uh, go to Ms. Musto to hand up first, then back to Mr. Cohen. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Musto.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I was the one who at one of the previous meetings had asked Mr. Milano to provide some information um, on the, um, the numbers and, and the amounts of money and, and more information. And he was going to provide that to me. So for today's meeting, uh, I'm not prepared to talk about it because I got that information very late today, and I, I really should have gotten it earlier. So in my case, I, I wanted to look at the information. I think Mr. Milano could attest to that. I did just get it and, um, and, and, you know, so I, I'm interested in learning a little bit more about what that would mean. Uh, and of course, we want to help, you know, people that need help. So I'm more interested in just finding out some more of the economics of it and so forth. And I didn't have the information. So for me, for today, I don't feel like I could vote on that right today because I don't have that information. And Mr. Milano knows that I've asked for that. So I think he could attest for that, right?
Okay, Mr. Cohen.
In my, um, if you recall, um, Mr. Zoll, it was Ms. Bradley, Ms. Bradley who asked me why I wanted to defer to item seven before going to which particular item. And I'm not ruling it out. I just wanted to go to item seven before we discussed that particular item. Not saying, not discuss it. I'm just want to go to seven first. That was my point.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm fine deferring it to the next meeting, and Ms. Musto still needs a little bit of time, uh, to look at the, the numbers. And I, we haven't said it yet, um, but, uh, Nick, we were really sorry for the loss of your, uh, of your, of your grandma. We know that that has slowed down some, some stuff, and that's, it's really tough, um, place to be in. So, uh, you know, at this time of year, as hectic and crazy as it is, and dealing with the loss in the family is, is, is really hard. So I'm a hundred percent fine uh, deferring on this, that everybody's got a little time to, to look at the, the materials.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I owed Rock, I gave Ms. Musto that information not a month, uh, I don't know about a month, at least a month ago. So I was alone getting out of our office. I got it to work, so, and I'll, I'll distribute to the rest of the board as well. Um, and we can have a, uh,
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate that.
Okay, so now, on the items that I have listed that we've gone through, can I have a motion to?
Yes.
Both, okay. So Ms. Bradley made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Musto. Roll call, vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Ms., uh, Ms. Bradley, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley.
Okay, yes.
I was, I'm, I'm, my pictures are popping up, but so I'm pointing at my pictures.
It's all good. And Lynn, you're good. I just wanna make sure that Lynn got which ones we're okay with. We're okay with three, four, five, seven, and eight.
I'm on it. Thanks.
All right.
That's it. That's it. Okay, you are a yes, Ms. Bradley?
Sorry, yes, I am a yes.
And I'm a yes. Now I'll take a motion to close the warrant.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
This motion by Ms. Musto, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Zoll. O'Callas in favor. Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Item number seven, discussion update fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget and five-year forecast operating override for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Milano?
Thanks, Ms. Chair. I have a couple of slides to, to walk through here in terms of, uh, the latest information on the budget, so I'll hold those up, uh, now. Um, as we've, uh, discussed previously, um, our revenue forecast has been pretty locked in for a couple of months now, um, as we don't have a ton of variability year over year in terms of our revenues, um, you know, our property taxes go up by an expected amount each year. Um, potential future updates to the revenue forecast are pretty limited. We may have to, um, revise new growth upwards in terms of good news. Um, our new growth has been consistently strong in the past couple of years as folks are renovating their homes and as some of the, uh, projects around town have been, um, slowly coming online. Um, so that has been a source of increased revenue in recent years. On the flip side, local receipts, I mean, you might wanna revisit the, to revise downwards. As folks may have noticed, um, interest rates are starting to be cut, which means our investment income forecast is gonna start, uh, going a little bit downwards. It's been conservative anyway, uh, we think it is, but just in terms of things that might change, um, over the next couple of months are those two items. And then lastly, the big one is state aid. Uh, we have a pretty conservative projection on state aid right now, which is a thirty dollar per student increase, which is only about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and a two percent increase on our other state aid accounts. Last year, the per pupil aid was over a hundred dollars a student, so it, it, that can be a couple hundred thousand. Um, the next, um, data points for us are the consensus revenue forecast that we expect, uh, this month. If, and it may have even come on, I may have missed it, um, but the state budget will be released in January, and that will be the first indication of what we use for state aid moving forward. Um, and, you know, fingers crossed for better than thirty dollars per people increase, um, over the prior year. Uh, for our expenditures, we've, we've grouped them just into kind of general categories to, to, um, help folks understand them. So we have, you know, the town departments that are under the town administrator, we have the school department under the superintendent, and then we have a bunch of accounts that account for, um, shared costs, whether it's employee benefits, the insurance we carry, the debt service we carry. Um, so those are the three larger, um, buckets that we, um, sometimes look at the budget in. And here is our fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, um, amounts. So twenty-four and twenty-five are what was approved by town meeting, and the twenty-six is our forecast. And as you can see, it's about a, a little bit over a ten million dollar increase year over year, um, in terms of twenty-five to twenty-six. Uh, shared costs, I'm gonna go through it a little bit more detailed, um, just as, there's one big driver here that I wanna, I'd like, uh, for folks, which is health insurance. But I'll walk through our shared costs, um, just because that's, that's a budget grouping that, uh, we don't talk about a ton. Um, as long as Milton retirement system, our increase on Milton retirement system is nominal, um, and that is based on, uh, the actuarial forecast for us and the funding schedule set by the Milton Retirement Board. So that's already been locked in. That includes the normal cost for, um, current employees, expected future benefits, and then, um, I'm next, an additional million dollars that is going into reserves essentially for the retirement board according to their retirement, uh, according to the funding schedule that they approved. If you recall, we did that as well in fiscal twenty-five and included a million dollars additional, um, into the retirement system, um, to overfund that system. Medicare is the Medicare tax we pay on a per employee basis, um, that's going up slightly based on increased payroll. Health insurance is, um, the big topic, which has a significant increase, um. Fiscal twenty-five's health insurance budget was funded a bit with one-time funds, so those need to be restored. Um, and then next slide is a little bit more, make them. So there are two, um, drivers of costs on health insurance for, for the town. First is obviously claims. What is our claims experience? Um, fiscal twenty-five, our claims are tracking, uh, well ahead of recent years. Uh, we've been on a, um, a really good run in terms of what our health insurance costs have been in the past few years where they've been below market and a trend we've been lagging below market, which is good news. Um, but now we're regressing back to the mean, uh, in a bad way, and, um, costs have been very significantly outpacing where they've been in the past few years. We previously had an including a five percent premium increase, um, which, you know, we try to be conservative, and perhaps that was a little more, uh, positive than we should have been. So in the latest version of the budget forecast we're using, we bumped that up to a ten percent increase, uh, to account for the claims, um, histories that we've been experiencing. Um, and continue to see, the town does have reinsurance. We have stop loss, so if there's any significant claims that are very expensive, um, the, the health insurance trust only pays about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Anything over above that is covered by, um, the reinsurance. So, um, not necessarily all bad news, but generally across the board, uh, medical costs are increasing, therefore, um, our burden is increasing as well. The other side of that coin is enrollment, and fiscal twenty-five enrollments are tracking well ahead of, um, where they were, uh, even a few months ago. Our forecast had about six hundred and ninety-eight, uh, people on the plans for fiscal twenty-five, as you can see, as of our October census. Uh, we're at seven hundred and fourteen. Uh, the large portion of that change has been to, uh, family plans, uh, which are very expensive, and I've used the Blue Cross Blue Shale Family Plan that we offer as an example. The total premium for that plan is almost thirty-one thousand dollars. The town pays, uh, twenty-three thousand or seventy-four, seventy-six percent of that, and the employee share is twenty-four percent. We have, um, attractive plans currently. They are four hundred, eight hundred dollar deductible, depending on individual or family plan. Uh, we don't have a high deductible plan currently. Um, so our enrollment has gone up, um, and as you can see, you know, every time somebody jumps onto a family plan, it costs the budget twenty-three thousand dollars over the course of a year. Uh, those start to add up. So between the increased enrollment, uh, that we've had to increase our, uh, health insurance forecast for and the increase in claims, um, we're seeing a significant increase in this health insurance budget from where we were, um, last year. And this is, you know, we've been lucky where our premium increases have been below three percent for a number of years now. Um, but this year, it looks like that will change. Um, certainly, enrollment can fluctuate downwards. Claims can get in much better shape, but as things stand today, uh, we, this is what the, um, big change in our budget is based on. And as you can see, we're talking almost, um, a three million dollar increase in health insurance alone, um, from twenty-four to twenty-five, part, I mean, twenty-five, excuse me, to twenty-six, partly because, um, the twenty-five budget was funded in part, um, through one-time monies. A couple of other shared costs are other imposed employment benefits. We refer to it as OPEB, which is primarily health insurance for retirees. Um, we're putting money into the OPEB trust for our future liabilities. Um, this meets the town's policy of contributing two point five million dollars to our long-term liabilities because we're contributing, uh, over one point five to OPEB and a million to retirement. So the policy contemplates those two avenues, uh, for paying down all town's long-term liabilities. Um, unemployment, uh, we are budgeting at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there are occasional claims that the town has to pay for unemployment. Um, I'll just note that in a non-override year where, uh, we have, uh, reductions to budget requests, I would expect us to have to revisit that unemployment line. Um, if we expect that position may be, um, unfunded or even layoffs, uh, contemplated. Oral insurance, the, uh, you know, workers compensation, liability, auto insurance, et cetera. That's, uh, currently based on an eight percent increase. We'll receive some better information in the spring. Um, and reserve fund is level funded, uh, in twen- in twenty-six. Uh, state assessment, which is what we pay the state, uh, through the cherry sheets, uh, and, and we get state aid, and then they charge us some money back. So that's got a two percent increase in our forecast currently. The general fund debt service has a, has a decent increase, um, and that includes projects that have already been approved, uh, but we haven't, uh, either commenced working on or haven't borrowed for quite yet. Um, new capital projects that are approved for borrowing at the upcoming town meeting, uh, likely wouldn't have any effect on the fiscal twenty-six debt service because our borrowing schedule means everything lags by a year or two on fiscal years before those costs start to show up. I'll just, the, um, only one that could have an impact is if any action is taken on the Cunningham project, as that is expected to start on a, on a faster track than some of our other capital projects, and because it's, um, if the current budget for that is over five and a half million dollars, so that's just a, a pricier project, then, uh, we're typically absorbing through the general fund debt service. And then the last shared cost is included, it's small, but it's the audit, um, not increasing costs is primarily due to, we have an OPEB evaluation that we have to do in this fiscal year. Those are the shared costs that comprise about, you know, thirty-five million dollars in the town's budget. I'm not, I'm not gonna go through in detail the town departmental budgets, just in summary. For the level service budget, um, uh, we're currently forecasting thirty-four point three million dollars, which is a one point four, uh, six million dollar or four point four percent increase. The school committee, um, heard its, uh, level service budget, um, request, uh, a few weeks ago now, um, their level service request is about six point three million dollars or a nine point four percent increase. Um, and that's just level service. Um, which then if you take in the top here, if you take the level service asks against our, um, revenues, we're looking today with everything standing as they stand at a, a deficit to close of about nine point five million dollars. If you start to talk about what needs are out there that folks have asked for, um, the schools, again, they talked about their needs-based budget. I think it was a couple of weeks ago, the first week of December, perhaps, um, and they actually broke that out into two years worth of, um, things that they're looking at. Uh, one point three million in the first year and eight hundred thousand dollars in the second year. Um, town departments have submitted, uh, about two million dollars in requests, uh, to fund needs-based items, um, but that, uh, list hasn't been, um, reviewed or, or whittled down in any way by myself yet. So that two million dollar reflects what folks have asked for without any adjustments, um, for myself. So uh, I wish I was here with, um, a rosier forecast and, and better news, but, uh, the reality is that, um, you know, our, our revenues, you know, we can count on or anywhere between three and four million dollars in new money a year. Um, we have been, uh, fortunate, like every other city in town in Massachusetts, to have had significant infusion of federal funds in the past few years. Um, but as we all know, and as we've been talking about for a number of years now, that, uh, is coming to an end. And as we voted earlier, uh, in the meeting, that our funding really is, is down to, we're, we were talking about twenty-two thousand dollars out of, um, out of millions of dollars that flowed to the town in the past few years. Um, so, um, that's what I presented. I, I have a couple of slides here in terms of a little bit of history and, and what nine and a half million dollars is in context. So there's a history of our tax levy, um, the highlighted, the orange highlighted years are override years. On the right-hand side, you can see what percent increases a year were on the average single-family tax bill. So oh-seven, there was eight percent increase. That's worth the twenty-ten, which is about eleven and a half percent increase, um, for an operating override as well. I think, um, some debt came, some debt exclusion, perhaps the library came on that year, uh, onto the budget. In twenty eighteen, um, there was an override for, that was about a seven and a half percent increase on the average single-family tax bill. Um, and then just using, just saying, okay, there's a nine and a half million dollar difference between what the level service requests are and what the budget for, the revenue forecast is. Uh, what does that mean for fiscal twenty-six if, if the town were to say, okay, let's just plug that with an override and, and go on from there? So right now, we're looking at about a three and a percent increase in the levy. That's already baked in to our base revenue forecast. So any override would be over and above that three point three million dollar increase. Um, so nine and a half million would bring, uh, the year-over-year tax increase, um, to close to twelve point eight million, which would be an eleven percent increase, uh, roughly on tax bills, um, in fiscal twenty-six. So, um, you know, we can, we can mesh or um, study some other scenarios. I just thought that this was helpful, kind of in terms of thinking in round numbers of, of what does, um, that impact look like? Um, and right now, at that nine and a half billion dollars without reductions, um, in level service asks as they exist, that's not funding, um, any increases in service anywhere across town departments or school departments. Um, that's just, uh, we've, you know, um, budgeted together in the past couple of years, uh, relying on some uses of one-time funds. Uh, you dig a little bit of a hole, and now it's time to, um, come up with a way to, to resolve that, or, or go back to departments and start reducing budgets and just, and put that into, um, kind of one scenario is if we have to develop a balanced budget, which we do for town meeting, no matter what. Um, you would look at use of free cash. We have about four point five million dollars certified. So one, one roadmap could be using free cash for our retirement payment, for our OPEB payment, for the reserve fund, for operating budget support, using free cash for town and school capital, as we continue to need to, um, invest in capital, even if, um, we have heavy asks on the operating budget. Um, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in the free cash is already, um, obligated only to opioid settlement purposes. And then, uh, you know, a half a million dollars, this is just what I did in this scenario. It's a stabilization. Our budget is going up. Um, no matter which way to look at it, the budget will go up, uh, so we should be helping fill up our reserves for a year where we're in a true economic downturn. You know, the, our budget forecasts aren't being affected by a recession or a depression or any economic downturn. Um, it's, this is a matter of how much money can we collect versus what are our costs? So in this scenario, um, with this kind of use of free cash, based on the needs that we have in front of us, we would need town and school departments to come in at a less than a two percent increase, um, from fiscal twenty-five to twenty-six to balance the budget. Um, so that's, that's a million, millions of dollars in reductions and from their ask for the schools and, uh, and, you know, half a million dollar reduction in what the school, and the town is looking for, um, which would have, you know, widespread effects across, uh, town, school departments. Um, so I went through that, uh, I think a little more quickly than I meant to, but just, um, kind of the high-level takeaways is we have the level of private tax. Those are nine and a half million dollars greater than our budget forecast today. Any needs would be above that. And while we do have some things that we need to fine-tune on both the revenue side and the expenditure side, we feel pretty confident in those estimates, um, right now, um, with the caveat that in January, we expect some things to change based on new information coming out. And, um, I'll just leave, I think I'll leave that up for a moment, and happy to see any questions are handed over to the board for discussion.
Don't all jump at once. Questions, comments, Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're very all anxious to talk about, uh, this, but, um, so, uh, Mr. Milano, thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, I, I'm just gonna lead off by saying the American healthcare system is broken. We need a single payer. Like the insurance racket that is being run is terrible, and there, a lot of people are upset about that, and, um, it has consequences in the private sector, and it also has significant consequences in the public sector. Not much we can do about that on the select board, except say, say it, and so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say that. Um, one item that kind of stood out to me, Mr. Milano, was the, uh, Cunningham, uh, renovation. I think you said it was five and a half. My understanding was that that was like a two million dollar budget.
Yeah.
Um, is, did we, uh, I, I, and I was aware that it had gone up. I wasn't aware that it had gone up that significantly.
Uh, yes. I was gonna say it'll, it'll go through the capital budget process, um, but it, there is an ask to increase that appropriation from two million to just over five and a half, um, to, to build up the four additional classrooms and, and move the library.
That's a big dig level, uh, miscalculation in terms of the cost. I, 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 I just, it, I'm curious about where the, where the numbers came from and who vetted them so that when we said yes to two, we were actually saying yes to five and a half.
Well, the project hasn't started, so, uh, in terms of, any, any construction hasn't started. Um, I think the architects came on board, the former consolidated facilities director. That was where the number came from. Um, we, we went with that, go in a town meeting last year. Obviously, it was approved at town meeting as the architects were brought on board. Dove into it a little bit more, um, the realities of public construction right now. Dove into it a little bit more, the realities of public construction right now in Massachusetts just, I mean, it's a thousand square foot. As we talked about even with the new school, this is a little more complicated where you're you're actually renovating space, so it can get a little bit trickier. So, no, just to be clear, the it doesn't mean we're gonna spend five and a half million dollars. It needs a town meeting approval before we're to go forward. So that is, that is going to come through the capital and select board and in town meeting process for the annual town meeting for an adjustment to that. Projects and we'll see where it goes from there.
Great. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Let us want to comment on Mr. Zoll's remarks there. Either on the insurance thing, you're the third person today, I've heard, make that comment on insurance companies and you're a hundred percent correct. Second, on the capital request. So we haven't, I don't think we've seen it yet. We have a meeting on Thursday. So they are gonna have to come back and I, this is gonna be, you you're correct. I mean, this is a huge. You asked for two million, we're expecting it to already be starting this year and now you know we're not even starting. You want another three million dollars, that's. There's gonna be some angst with the capital committee over this. I know there is, and I don't, I'm not sure yet what the path is gonna be, how to do this, but you're correct on that. This must go and then Mr. Cohen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wrote down a bunch of little questions here. I'm hoping Mr. Milano can answer them for me. The first thing I would say, for anyone who works in healthcare, it's very complicated. I don't think it's as holistic as a single payer system. It's a very complicated system. But to your point, I mean, the premiums are outrageous. Can you speak about, I know that we gave a holiday. Can you speak a little bit about what the cost was of that holiday, Mr. Milano, that we gave? Believe it was a health, was it a health insurance holiday? Or something, so I wanted you to speak about that. I'm gonna give you a bunch of things, one, one at a time.
Probably one at a time, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
We had contemplated including a premium holiday this year. So we reduced the town's appropriation into the health insurance trust in the budget for that, which on the town side is about a half a million dollars. So that has not, we have not done the premium holiday yet. It was contemplated and included in terms of a budget process that we would. And we're continuing to evaluate that through the fiscal year.
Okay, cuz I'm trying to understand what the cost would be doing that, you know.
Four hundred fifty thousand dollars to do that.
Okay, the other questions I have, I know in the past with terms of workers' comp. We used to have a program where they came in, I don't know if who did it, but they came in and it. They did some kind of training like in how to properly, you know, pick things up and different things. Biomechanics and things, and that helped reduce some of the the injuries. So I'm wondering, do you know anything about that? It was done in the past and it seemed to help. And I don't know if they have programs like that still or, you know.
So yeah, no, our chair office, the number of programs and we'll do trainings whether they're department specific for for different things. Actually, our workers' comp experience has been really good, so that general insurance categories for all of our insurance, workers' comp, auto insurance, property insurance. Professional liability, so it's it's all of those categories where we're seeing a little bit of an increase. But our workers' comp has not been going up very high and our modification, our experience on it is is good right now. So we're in a good run right now.
On the expenditures outlook, can you explain on the shared, on one of the first pages, the FY twenty five looks like it's lower than twenty four and twenty six?
Uh, yes, so, yeah, it it does look a little odd, but the reason for that is in twenty four, the town.
I can't hear you. What was that? I'm sorry.
Sorry, is that any better? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, sorry about that. So in fiscal twenty four, we had made our final payment into the retirement system for full funding of the system. So I think our payment was almost eight million dollars in that year. And then we hit full funding, so almost five million dollars of our obligation to the Milton Retirement System were taken off the books. So in fiscal twenty four, our shared costs were higher because we were making these big payments into Milton Retirement. Fiscal twenty five, they dropped significantly because we're no longer making those big payments. Two and a half million dollars flowed to the general fund budget. Two and a half million dollars went to OPEB into retirement. So it's a reduction because we hit full funding in our our payments for Milton Retirement were lower. It's back up this year because of health insurance.
Okay, and you mentioned the state assessments. I'm wondering if you could provide a list of of where our state assessments go. You don't need it right now, but if you could forward that, I'd appreciate that. And this is, again, these these budgets are level service, no additional staff, correct, that we're looking at?
Yes, the the point is, and what we ask folks to do is. Tell us what it costs to provide the services you're providing today, not adding new services. And that's the school department's approach too. I I don't wanna answer for them in terms of, does it mean absolutely no new staff? Because I think there's times where they need additional staffing around special education and other services. And I don't know that that's the case this year and I I don't wanna speak for them, but in our in our case from for the town departments right now. There's no additional staff included in the budget. There are increases to town departments. We are increasing for utilities. We're increasing. The consolidated facilities, for example, ask for an increase because the cost of doing work has gone up. Department of Public Works, we've included a level service increase to our vehicle and maintenance and repair lines. Because what it costs to repair a fire engine three years ago is not what it costs to repair one now. So we need to kind of level set some of those budgets, so that's included in level services. But it's not necessarily an expansion of needs. They're not repairing more vehicles or, you know, somebody's vehicle down the street. That's just costs more to repair the town's vehicles that they've always done. So that's a little bit of context on the staff side, no new staff. Salaries and wage increases that are obligated, yes. And then on the general expenses side, adjustments for where we're seeing price increases that limit our ability to deliver those services.
And then with regards to the this form with the with the that shows like the years that we had overrides. I'm on that graph right now. Can you speak about what the, like what the dollar amount was that we went out for? So we went out for a three million dollar override and we went out for four million, like what are the dollar amounts that coincide with those years? These are percentages, but I'd like to know how much we asked people for. And then with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about this eleven point something percent, what the dollar amount really equates to.
Fair, no, and that's, the percent is helpful because obviously twenty years ago, it's a different number. So I, this is based on the state's information that the Department of Revenue keeps on their website. So the twenty two thousand seven operating override was two point four million. The fiscal twenty ten operating override was three point four million. The fiscal twenty eighteen operating override was three point one. So actually less than twenty eighteen than it was in twenty ten. So that explains why that was higher in twenty ten than it was in twenty eighteen.
So that's a considerable, I mean, if you're talking, you know, a nine million and the the largest ones we've gone, I know these are different years. But has been in the threes, basically. That's a huge difference.
Right, and in in all our amounts, it's a it's a big one. And then in terms of the percent increase, it it tracks a little bit more closely to twenty ten. I obviously wasn't around in twenty ten, so I can't speak with a whole lot of experiences to what. What was going into to the decisions at that point, I'll just point out that, yeah, it's it's high in terms of dollar amounts and it's it's certainly high on the percent side.
And so this is my final question, I'm sorry. So you're talking eleven point something increase, so is that equating to like an a million dollar house like eleven hundred dollars or so a year? Is it that simple?
No, that's that's a good way to think about it. The average house is close to is over a million now. Your average tax bill is about eleven thousand, so you'd be looking at a ten percent, eleven percent increase. So in the ballpark of anywhere from a little to twelve hundred dollars and back to the envelope map.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
You're sure? You're sure? Okay.
Good now, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so just, so just before I go, I see Mr. Zoll, I missed Cohen first, then Mr. Zoll. So this is just the first look, it's not voting anything tonight. So what I had asked Mr. Milano to do was just to kind of, we need to get this out here so we can start to have questions about this. Just, I don't wanna, a little bit of historical is that. In each of those prior to overrides, the number that. Was sought was a number that was palatable, that that both the town and the leadership thought the residents could absorb. Just a little bit of history to one that's more modern and around us. We may all recall, last year the town of Braintree was in a cymbal, they're looking at sixteen million dollar. The same what what would be our nine, but then with sixteen, they sought an eight million dollar override, which was their first one, they were a successful. Okay, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Zoll, and then if broader, it's gonna be good for tonight, I'll just keep going along, is that okay? Okay, Mr. Cohen.
I had a question for Nick. What is the, you know, the timeframe for this? I have a couple of questions, but my first is, you know, what is the timeframe for? The school department getting back to you, to us? Or all departments for that matter?
So requests are in, the ball's really in this board's court. Sorry to to put it in yours. But I what, we really need kind of a two step kind of guidance from the select board at this time. Not necessarily tonight, but soon. And I think the first one is, is an override off the table. And if override is off the table entirely, then I go back to the schools and I go back to my departments and say. All right, now we're at less than a two percent increase. Let's whittle these department asks, let's whittle these budgets now, and that's what we spend the next, you know, little while doing. If the answer is no, we're we're not contemplating that scenario and we're gonna do an override, it's a matter of the right number. Then we, you know, we spent some time kind of working with our team to figure out. What is a number that works from our perspective? And then B, how do we make this sustainable so we're not having this conversation next year? You know, what what options do we have to build in some resiliency and some stability for a couple of years or a few years? So that we're not kind of putting the taxpayers back in the same position. And I think part of that is being realistic about revenue forecasts and expenditures and not. Not getting what is needed to to kind of build in some of that stability over the next couple of years. So it's it's not an easy answer. I I think I think right now the information is is where it's at. Requests we can work on for the time being, but I think the big picture questions for this board are really is a no override at all. Option what you're directing us to go down, and if it's not, then we'll build that. Non-override budget for the town meeting warrant, because we always have one in there, but we'll spend a lot of time thinking about how to structure something that works.
And then my my next question is, and this may be the next step, but how do we build? Confidence when, you know, we just had the twenty twenty four budget and we mentioned this at the finance committee. We had the twenty twenty four budget for the schools initially fifteen days after we closed the books. We were saying we got two million, turned out it was three point eight million. And then come this year, we're asking for what it was an eight percent plus increased level funding for the schools. And now we're asking for nine point four four. So moving forward, how can we gain some confidence that the twenty twenty seven number? Can be done, do you know what I mean? I mean, you know, and not not even just the twenty twenty seven number, because we have problems with twenty twenty five. Because the budget was based on twenty twenty four and that was off, so we could have problems right now. And I just, how do we, you know, we're gonna have to gain confidence in their numbers somehow.
No, I agree, but I think the message is. There's no way for the town to absorb, you know, year over year, nine percent budget increases. And for the foreseeable years after twenty six, those acts are gonna have to be, you know, honestly, like three percent. Right around three percent in order to make this work for a couple of years. Communities have entered into where the select board and school committee have put pen to paper on an agreement saying, we acknowledge. And we won't submit budget requests that exceed certain percentages. So that's a pathway we could go towards too with your colleagues in the school committee. In terms of kind of memorializing and making that commitment over the next couple of years.
Mr. Cohen, you're all set.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, you all set now?
Yes, I took my hand down. Thank you.
Mr. Zoll.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'll be very brief. Oops, sorry, they tried to get my hand down. Just some high level stuff. So number one, I think this speaks to the need for Milton more than ever to diversify our tax base. Expand commercial opportunities in town so that we don't have to put tax increases on residents' shoulders every year. This is, it's, we're at mission critical, and this is what's happened when we've stymied business growth for decades. Is that we have this ridiculous high percentage of our tax base is dependent upon single family housing. Second is, I think we also have to recognize that twenty two thousand and four was twenty years ago. So when we look at override numbers that are eighteen, nineteen years old and we try to compare them to today. We have to take in inflation into consent and in in, you know, two thousand, three million dollars in two thousand and four is about five million dollars today. So it's not an apples to apples comparison, so I just wanna caution us from saying, well, we've never done this before. I see Ms. Musto's put her hand up, so I'm sure she's gonna tell me about inflation being complicated too. But we can't, we have to make sure that we're being very specific about our current dollar values. And my final point is inflation is not gonna stop. In fact, it may get worse. And so I I hear what Mr. Cohen is saying about trying to go in with confidence. I think the top thing that we need to do as a town is trust our folks who are giving us numbers. But then also verify the numbers that have gone through the process. So I think, you know, when we look at the schools, when we look at the town, are we get, we're usually getting good information. When the information isn't correct, like for example, in the Cunningham instance where we've gone from two to five and a half million. Why was that, why did that happen, right? So if we have a shift of like ten more families signed up for healthcare insurance and healthcare insurance premiums have gone up twenty percent. I'm less concerned about the ten families and I'm much more concerned about the twenty percent of the healthcare premiums. So we really need to start asking ourselves some tough questions in this town. Because we're not in a sustainable financial situation and we will not be until we have either more taxpayers paying residential tax dollars. Or and more commercial residences paying paying tax dollars. We need more tax revenue for this town. We're not sustainable. We still pay on a state average two thousand dollars less per pupil for our schools. So it's not like we were shoveling money into a cash cow. Our schools are underfunded compared to our peers. But we still have these increases. So just drastically cutting the school budget isn't the isn't the right solution either, because we're already below state average. And that's gonna kill property tax values. Finally, I'll just make the point that if we do go forward and with a no override and we have significant unemployment as a result. That's also going to affect our budget, as Mr. Milano alluded to. We don't have a big unemployment budget right now, but if we start laying off folks because we can't meet our payroll, that's, that number's gonna go up. So again, it's not a zero sum game where if we just cut a position like a teacher, that we're suddenly off the books with that with that cash. So I I think that we're at a dramatic moment of this town where we have to start making some real tough choices. And for sure, we know that the current trajectory of what our tax base is and what we need in this town is is not sustainable. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't need to say anything else about this.
Okay, it's nine thirty. I really wanna move this along, but Ms. Musto, just give me brief.
Um, yes, I will. So I do have a comment to say, I'm glad, first of all, Mr. Zoll is such a mind reader that he knows what I'm gonna say ahead of time, so that's great. But what I was going to say was that the the last override was in two thousand eighteen. My question for Mr. Milano is, whatever we're deciding to go out with, you know, you can't go out the net in the following year going back to people. So whatever you decide or the board decides, we need some guidance on from from you, talking with. On the school side and the town side and also what is gonna sustain more than a year or two. Because that'll be important, because you don't wanna go back out, you know, shortly thereafter. And with all that being said and done, the other question is, is what is the timeframe that we'd be looking at doing that?
I think by the end of mid-January would be great, by the end of January is. By the end of January is 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 probably where we want to be, you know, having had a decision made. So it's um a busy month.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, final, uh, Mr. Cohen and then Ms. Bradley.
I haven't talked yet, so.
I know, yeah, I know. So I, Ms. Bradley, then Mr. Cohen.
I I I.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And partially in answer to to um Nick and that, you know, this is a question to the board. I think this is a question to all the people, and I think this is, you know, our job is going to be to convince them that this is right and this is what we need. And and in in order to do that, we need to explore this from both the expense per perspective and the revenue perspective, not just revenue. So I, you know, we we have to be, I think we have to be able to, we have to be convinced first so that we can sell this because, you know, it's that's basically what we have to do to the people. I think come when we're presenting this is that we did our homework and we looked into the expenses and revenues as much as we can and did as much as we can. And here we are. That's just where I I see us having to go. Thank you. No more question.
We be assured, we will be doing that. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I promise to keep it brief.
No, go ahead. I'm you've been very quiet tonight.
Haven't I?
Yes.
Remember that.
I am.
So all I wanted to say is, um, as somebody who, like you, Mr. Chair, has been dealing with this budget now for almost a decade, um, there are things that ebb and flow, and one thing that is a constant is that the cost for health insurance and the cost that we pay people will continue to rise year after year. If you look down into what our executive session is about to cover, it is a whole bunch of contracts that are up. We did not think that we would be paying some of those bargaining units, what we're paying bargaining units as of right now. Right? We had to go to mediation. There's a lot of things that are an X Y factor that we do not have control over. So while it is all well and good, and I appreciate all the hundreds of questions about things and how to lift boxes and, you know, look under the rug. I think that there needs to just be a baseline agreement between us on what are things that we can't control that we have to just accept. And I don't want to talk about health insurance until we're blue in the face because guess what, guys? We have to accept what it is. There is no way around it. I've tried to get the GIC or the GIC, whatever you guys want to call it. I was a member of the GIC for many years. I've tried to do that here. It's not gonna work. I get it. But at some point, we need to just start from a starting point of, okay, we all agreed to this. Now let's do some digging because, as Mr. Chair has just said, we've talked a lot tonight. It it's it's not that it's not, I I love it. I love listening to you guys all talk because usually it's me. So I just want us to come to a place where we get to in January where this isn't going to be, or maybe it has to be, a separate meeting where we only talk about the budget. Because we used to have a finance committee, which I know is next on your agenda, Mr. Chair, and I can't wait to discuss that. But if we're gonna discuss this as a five member board this deeply, we are definitely going to need another meeting, not just our regular meeting because this will take hours for people to understand exactly what's going on with the budget. And we are very lucky that we have Amy, that we have that new wonderful person over at the schools, and I cannot think of her name and I'm so sorry to her. And we've got Joanna, and all of them are looking at this with new eyes. There is no more money stashed away, stored in a little magical box. The magical box was used. We found all the boxes. We used them up last year. I promise you, there is no more boxes. And so when we look at this, we have to make sure that we are looking at it and starting from the same point. And that is all I'm asking the select board to do is that we all agree to some starting point when we do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. So two points, let us be brief, and then I'm gonna move because when a lot of time I keep getting a Zoom invitation to our executive session, it's popping up on my phone at nine thirty. Um, so first off, um, first to Mr. Zoll's point, I'm trying to on all of them just quickly. To Mr. Zoll's point, I I hear you on the commercial, but I just give you a little historical. Twenty eighteen, in twenty eighteen, um, Steel and Rye and eighty Woff my known as Magister in the, we're just coming into an existence. Eighty Woff's a building is our number one taxpayer in today in town. There was no Navara, there was no Abbey Park, there was no all all Madre, Mr. Ch, uh, not my um Japanese restaurant there, there was no Mr. Champ, those did, none of those existed. And I, Mr. Milano and I've talked about just in restaurant text, so that pressure, one thirty one Elliot wasn't built yet, like that pressure is always going to be there. Um, it's in the push between commercial and residential. We're always trying to protect the quality of life here from what it is what people enjoy. So I think what I what I'm going to do is defer the next question, the next item on the agenda and schedule a meeting just for this purpose because I think we need to talk about this at length. I think everyone needs, we're gonna, I think, to Mr. Milano and Amy, who are the whole finance team, needs to just keep um a surprise. And I think to Ms. Bradley's point, and we'll have to look closely at what it is we can afford and what we can't afford. And to and finally, to Ms. Musto's point, we definitely want to make this sort sustainable so that we're not, you can't go back in three years and say, okay, let's do this again. You just have to. And so, Mr. Mo, I give you some credit, you did some hard work on this. This is not an easy thing to do. Been through this more times than I can count. This will be very hard. And the one thing that I think for all of us here tonight, we need to be together on this. And I was gonna end up at Ms. Bradley here. Ned, we're moving on.
And you can, I would just want to speak about about the next item. So before you defer it, I would like to speak about the next item.
All right, go ahead, and then I'm gonna defer.
You need agreement from the whole board, Mr. Chair, to do that.
Not to not to defer, well, she can defer.
Right, because I forgot, the czar can do everything. I forgot about that.
No, you see, I just, you brought a good point up that like I I I.
Right. Just real quick, what I want to say about this next agenda item. Because I don't think that the general public knows is that there currently is not a select board finance committee. Right? And so what has happened is that I resigned from the select board finance committee because I did not feel that I was given information that I needed to make sure that I had what was necessary to make informed decisions to recommend to the select board. This is a, this is a big shift. And I understand that when you had a three member board, you guys didn't have one, it was totally different. There was three of you. Oh, my gosh, now my dog's gonna like attack my kid. Hold on one sec. So so it was a different time, right? There's only three of you guys that you had to talk to. Now we got five people. Having these discussions at length with five people like this is going to go on forever. And 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 no offense to anybody who's asking questions, I don't care, ask nine hundred questions, I do not care. But you are shifting the way that the select board has operated since I've known about it on the warrant committee. So God, what, you guys must have done that a while ago when you went to a three to five. I'm just saying that before we disband a finance committee or before we change the charge of a finance committee, we should really stop and think about what that entails. Because part of the other conversation we had tonight had to do with ARPA funding, which could all been vetted at the finance committee level, and it would have taken three seconds here, and it didn't. And so there's, there is an efficiency piece of this, and there's also a public piece of this. Whereas if we are not having a finance committee, then who's making all those decisions? Is it, is it happening between Nick and you and and Lizzie? I don't know. I don't know because that's, those are things that I've seen over time now. And I just want to make sure that we are being as open as possible to our residents on what is happening with our finances, what is happening with our next steps. I mean, do do people know that you're also the chair of the capital committee? I don't know. Do people know? I I don't know what people know. And so there's a point in time where you start to look at this and say, all the power is being concentrated. And there doesn't seem to be input from a few people who understand the budget. And so, Mr. Chair, I'm asking you, before you disband this, and and I'm happy you're gonna defer it. So before you do that, I would like you to stop and think about what that means for for input from our citizens, what that means for how this looks publicly and for what this means for our time. Because it is going to need to be an extra meeting for the five of us to discuss it because I love y'all, but y'all got a lot of questions. And it's not just me, it's all of us together as a group, and we should, but there is a time and place for that. So I know you're gonna defer this, and that's totally fine. I'm, I haven't said a word tonight. I've been really good because this was my issue. And now I'm stepping off my issue and I'm just gonna keep us moving forward. But, Mr. Chair, I would really like for you to not try and kill the finance committee yet, okay?
Okay, so just, can I comment just a second?
Please, 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 please.
I'm not trying to kill anything, and we did not have a finance committee the first three years that we had. It didn't start till, I think, our third year as five, as a committee of five. I was reminded by a member of the town government study committee, which when I asked Mr. Milano about it and the former town administrator, Mrs. Fagan, both said to me that the the question that was posed to me, the statement that was posed to me is true. When the town changed the former government from a three member board to a five member board with a strong town administrator, that town administrator was vested certain responsibilities. And one of the main responsibilities is the budget and our finances. He is the leader of that team, and I've, I'm I'm gonna leave it because I'm gonna let him speak to it, and he's not ready to speak to it tonight. So I'm gonna defer it from that, and then I'll add it to another agenda, and I'll let Mr. Milano speak to this and what he thinks, where he is, and then we'll go from there. Is that okay? So I'm gonna defer it for tonight, and we're gonna move on to, I don't know where we're, someone's gonna have to remind me where we're going, because.
We're going to eighteen right now.
Okay, so I'm gonna defer that and go to eighteen, which is Mr. Milano to you, town administrators before.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a few um notes. Um, we do have a new DPW commissioner. It's been a while since we met. But Marina Fernandez, our our prior town engineer, uh, took over as the DPW commissioner, uh, beginning on December second. So welcome to her, uh, just in time for uh snow and ice season, which. We'll start knocking on some um some wood so I don't jinx her and the team down at TPW. Um, I had huge thanks to Tom McCarthy, so Tom had stepped in to serve in an interim capacity upon uh Chase's departure and did that for um two months really. And uh, you know, a lot gets done in this town because Tom is uh helping it get done. So appreciate his his assistance in this time span, and he's happy, I'm sure, back to just be focused on consolidated facilities. Um, uh, Peter Rizzi, I I can't remember if I had mentioned this at our prior meeting, um, but we did make an internal appointment, um, so Peter Rizzi has been moved into the water sewer superintendent position. That was vacated when Greg McEntee was promoted to assistant commissioner of Public Works um earlier this spring. Um, we do have a few open positions still, the town planner uh still open. So if any folks um are interested in that position or know anybody who may be, please let us know. Cheyenne Fraser, the um assistant director, has been um stepping up in a huge way since Tim Zerwinski left at the end of November. The town engineer position is open uh upon Marina's uh promotion. Uh, so again, any interest, please let us know. And the environmental coordinator position uh is open as well. Um, also sits in engineering, um, although we think we may have a candidate there. Um, there's been an issue, it's been in the news and elsewhere about um checks going through the mail and associated problems with that. So if you can, um, just a suggestion from folks to uh send money in a way that is not a paper check. I know around the holidays, people often send payments out to relatives, but just something to keep in mind. Uh, we've, uh, Milton's been the victim of it, and and we've had checks stolen. Um, Milton Police have been involved in an investigation that resulted in um, some arrests um out of town uh related to some um uh checks being seized and taken out of mailboxes, including uh somebody had a key to a mailbox. So uh, please keep that in mind uh this holiday season. And speaking of the holidays, um, uh, we had the holiday tree lighting a couple of weeks ago in East Milton. So thanks to everybody that put that together. Um, you know, Anthony Musto and John Driscoll, who helped out with the tree, Joe Parlebeccio from the Chamber for helping uh coordinate it, all the other businesses that played a role and especially um our DPW team. I probably a little miss somebody, but from anywhere, everybody from Tom McCarthy to Aldo Brad McCarthy, Jack Calabro, Kevin Larkin, um, who else am I missing? Sarah, David Burns was down there. So uh, a number of people put that together uh behind the scenes, so thanks to everybody. Milton Fire for driving Santa over, Milton Police for the details. So uh, a lot of people go and uh do a lot of work around that event. We appreciate everybody's support. And um, I'll be asking the board uh to meet um prior to next week to approve placing a menorah um on the landing on the deck as well. Um, and thanks to um a few folks in town, um, including Rabbi Benjamin, who are interested in in um, in donating menorah to the town to be used and displayed um alongside our other holiday decorations on the deck. Um, so I I just, Ben had mentioned this beginning of the meeting, that uh, folks who wish to donate to that effort um can contact uh the congregation and Rabbi Benjamin to do so. Um, and thanks, Mr. Wells and Senator Dritz, Senator Electraskol and and Ben and others for um assistance uh as we've been working on this. That concludes my report at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of points, I'll be quick, just uh on a sad note, I just want to make too many sad notes this year, but uh, two weeks ago, this town lost a very young man, Jared Crowley, a gifted individual from East Milton who died suddenly at the age of forty two. He leaves behind his wife, Jess, and two young kids. But for those who know, Jared was the creator and the builder of the giant sandbox at Milk Music Fest each and every year and had a huge theme behind it. Jared also constructed projects for children with Make-A-Wish Foundation and one very young girl was a cancer victim in this town who gratefully today is in remission. She wanted to have a tree house in her life, and several years ago, Jared built the most unbelievable tree house in her backyard. Um, the Serpa family over on Rose Street, I was fortunate to be able to visit it, go up inside at once, nicer than my house. But um, he will be sorely missed. He was truly a man who was led with kindness in so many ways. And um, it's a big loss for this community, like so many others, too many others we have this year. And I think a good note, I think you covered everything of the tree lighting and um, the holidays and all the other, all the other community events that have taken place in this town. Um, it's a credit to so many people who care about their home and about the quality of life here. So thank you to everyone during this holiday season. That's pretty much all I have. I don't think I forgot anything.
Did I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so, all right, I have two quick things. One was just actually, well, no, the Rotary Club did the tree lighting.
Yes, they did.
And so I wanted to do a shout out to Walter White, who set that up. It was freezing cold. I got there late because I was coming from work. Um, but the other thing was um on January fifteenth at the COA at five thirty is the Community Health um Improvement Plan, which is called the CHIP. Uh, and so it's based off of the Community Health Assessment. Um, and they're gonna um talk about um some things to prioritize and so forth. So I think if we could get, you know, if anybody on the select board wants to come, that's great. Um, and people in the community, and Caroline asked me to make sure that everybody knew about that tonight. So thank you.
Is this a part two of the last one?
That was the opioid, the one that I saw. That was the opioid. Um, this is the Community Health Assessment that was done. This is um prioritizing some um action plans around that, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Um, future meeting dates, Tuesday, January fourteenth, but I think we may swap that. Am I correct? Um, and Mr. Mo, you want us to know, we may flip that to the first Tuesday. Am I correct? That's right, Mr. Zoll.
Yeah, that would be fine if that's, if that day works for everybody else.
If that works, so if we just let Mr. Zoll, Ms. I'm Mr. 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 Well, I don't know, um, that'd be great.
I'll have to know too.
Okay, and then uh future agenda items.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
The things we've deferred to tonight, go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
Just real quick, if anybody's watching and they want to help contribute to the menorah, you can give tax free as a gift. It's bethshalonbluehills.org, select the the Rabbi's Discretionary Fund and put Town Menorah as a note, and you can give a charitable gift. Um, and that will go towards helping uh pay for the menorah. Sorry, just wanted to plug that website.
No worries. No, that's fine. No worries. No, that's fine. Um. Okay. Future, any other future agenda items or other things that were deferred from tonight to the next meeting? Anything else? Going once, going twice.
We'll have the, uh, the the lighting, um, the bylaw, Mr. Milano, that will be ready for that.
That's why, that's on, that's the one I mentioned. That's the one that was deferred for tonight.
Thank you.
So given that, I'm gonna make a motion, we're done, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session. Pursuant to Master in Law, Chapter Thirty, A, Section Twenty-one, A, dash, three. Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Following units, Milton Carica Unit of Southeastern Public Employees, Mount Professional Management Association, Mount Public Employees Association. Mount Firefighters Local One-One-One-Six, Mount Police Association, Milton Superior Officers and Milton Library Association. I don't know if. Okay, one, no, I think I have to. Yeah, we're not coming back. That's why I was just gonna ask. We will not be returning to public session. We'll be adjourning. Did I cover that correctly? Because I'm reading off the regular agenda. It doesn't have all that language. I think I covered it.
Chair.
Okay, so now we'll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And myself. Just before we exit, Nick, it's a different link, right? So we gotta exit out and then log back in?
Uh, separately. Um, actually, why don't we, um, why does everybody stay here? We can just stay on this webinar. We'll lock it once everybody leaves. Everybody, everybody sits tight, wants them.
All right, why don't you do that then?